Okay, you're all set to begin.
Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and councilors. Welcome to the Barnstable Town Council Special Meeting of June 25, 2020 of the Town Council. I have to ask, this meeting is being recorded and transmitted by the Town of Barnstable and is being broadcast over Channel 18. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20, if anyone is planning to make an audio or video recording or transmit the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair before doing so. And in order to do that, you would call in and check in with Ms. Mew, Deals, and/or Lynn Poyant to notify the Chair that you are planning to record. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you would for us, please, if you could do a roll call.
Counselors. Beedenbender. Bogan. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan. Rob Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Lebec.
Present.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr. Stein Hilber.
Here.
You have Coram.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask that Counselor Shaughnessy would lead us, if we could all unmute ourselves, and Counselor Shaughnessy will do the pledge of allegiance for us, then followed by a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, councilors, we will now open for public comment. Just point of order, this is a special meeting, and by our charter, special meetings of the Town Council do not require us to have public comment. But with so many things going on within the community and concerns that our citizens have, we have chosen to have public comment this evening. I do want to make, I know that heavy on many people's thoughts, the cell towers and 5G, so I just want to make this comment before public comment begins. The court memorandum and order in the T-Mobile lawsuit in regards to cell towers is currently under review by our town. So we are paying attention to that. So thank you, just wanted to let you know that. Do we have anyone ready for public comment?
There's no one for public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. Sarah.
Madam Clerk, I do see Counselor Starr has joined.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Sarah, have we heard from anybody for public comments?
There's no one for public comment this time, sorry. I was getting Counselor Starr and Bogan into the meeting.
Thank you very, very much. And I will just delay one more moment while the two councilors get into the, into the meeting. And I do want to take this, this moment to really thank Lynn and the manager's office and Sarah for helping us to bring these, these meetings to the public through this Zoom process. They work extra hard to make it happen, and we thank them. Okay, not hearing anyone for public comment, what we will do is, we don't have the council, we're going to go right into the Town Manager's Communications.
Good evening, Markell, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's update for the period of June 19, 2020 through June 25, 2020. We are proceeding with the tasks and the budget action calendar for FY 2021 is scheduled. We submitted the recommended FY 2021 operating budget to the Town Council on May 12, and will continue with the scheduled second readings later this evening. We have received a comprehensive financial advisory committee report on the FY 2021 operating budget, and I attached it to the email that I had sent to all of you. I'd be remiss if I did not thank CFAC and our Finance Director, Mark Mill, and all of the directors and their staff who assisted in the preparation of this budget. We appreciate CFAC in, in the short timeframe that they had because we had taken the original budget to modify it as we entered into this emergency, but they still were able to provide us with a report. So I want to thank them. And all of our information is available on our website for our public to view. The new news today, I've attached the Commissioner of Education's initial fall reopening guidance. The governor has announced the plan to reopen schools in the fall. The guidance promotes bringing back as many students as possible, as safely as possible, to in-person learning. Some of the highlights that our superintendent had shared with me, physical distancing in the school is going to range from three to six feet. Children in grade two and above and all adults will be required to wear masks. Secondary schools are urged to create cohorts of students to reduce contact. High-need students should be prioritized for full-time in-person learning when feasible. Schools should use alternative space such as cafeterias and gyms to reduce class size. Reopening plans must include in-person hybrid and remote learning. Districts and schools will be required to submit their comprehensive fall reopening plans by August. Cafeterias may not be used. Meals are to be in the classroom, kind of a grab-and-go style. The document also asks for the creation of a reopening task force. Barnstable has already created and commenced subcommittees that are addressing reopening. The superintendent is sending the guidance to the steering committee and the subcommittees so that it can be incorporated into our school department's current planning. The superintendent plans to provide an update on July 15th at the school committee meeting and during Town Manager Communications on June 16th here at the Town Council meeting. As a reminder, the Town of Barnstable offers online purchases for, for many licenses and permits, dog licenses, shellfish licenses, mooring permits, small vessel storage decals, transfer station sticker, which is due July 1st, and beach parking permits, to name a few. You want to make sure you try to get them in advance because many of them have to be mailed. I didn't have to do that with my dog license. I got my dog license. I printed it out, but then they mailed me the tags. So we'll keep you advised. We're going to be, we're going to be trying to shift to online contactless as a primary source here forward. We're not going back to the way that we used to do it. We can certainly accommodate people when they call and set up an appointment, or as we leave this recovery stage and get back to the future normal, I'm sure we'll have opportunities to come back to our facilities to make purchase. But our focus is this will be the primary way going forward. Had a lot of people ask that, so I thought I'd share it again. We continue with regular conversations with Vineyard Wind regarding the status of the Phase One and Phase Two project. Vineyard Wind continues to work with Barnstable staff regarding the phases of this project. They anticipate commencing construction in Phase One in the spring of 2021, and proceeding with the permitting for Phase Two. A workshop is planned with Vineyard Wind at the Council's July 16 meeting to further discuss remaining approvals by the town and specifically Town Council for the Phase One project. And again, we'll keep you advised as we progress on, on any and all phases of a Vineyard Wind project. We continue to provide programs and services while managing this recovery effort. Our public beaches will be in full operation this Saturday, June 27, 2020. Assistant Town Manager Clyburn and I had the chance to speak with our lifeguards yesterday at their orientation day. It was very different than the very excited full room in our, in your chamber that I've attended for years. We did it by Zoom, you know, but, but we had the opportunity to talk with them about the upcoming season, about our expectations, and primarily that we are there to support them and to keep them safe while they keep our residents and visitors safe on the beaches. Our lifeguards, our gate attendants, our, our beach aides are not social distancing police, and they will not be playing that role for our town at our beaches. We will have staff, if you've spent time at Sandy Neck and you've seen the rangers that are out there, as well as the lifeguards, we're going to have adults, responsible adults that work for us out on the beaches, and they are going to be assisting us as we ask all of our public to act responsibly, follow the guidelines, and have a wonderful summer. And let's hope that everybody continues to do that. Our playgrounds, our comfort stations, our shanties are open. I think the signs, we're just waiting on some signs in a couple locations at our, at some of our playgrounds. We are offering a summer fun club from July 6 to August 14 at three sites, you know, all, all, well, two school sites, no, no, all three school sites, BCIS, BIS, and Centerville Elementary. Typically, we have, you know, many more sites than that, but we do have a limited number enrolled at this point, a little under 100. And, and I understand, I mean, parents are concerned. It's a different program than we've been able to offer in the, in the past. But I want to commend our recreation staff. This was such an easy answer of no, we're not going to do it. And our staff said, the kids are way too important in our community. We're going to see what we can do. It was very difficult in pinning down what the expectation of the state would be of us to provide a program like this. Took a significant amount of planning and creative thinking to develop a program that meets the requirement safety standard, required safety standards, while providing a fun and meaningful experience for the kids and allowing parents to place their trust in us during this situation. And we're very thankful and grateful to Michelle Davies, one of our program coordinators, to our superintendent, Meg Mayo-Brown, and Dave Kenyock. Again, would have been an easy, no, too complicated this year. We're not going to let you use school facilities. That was not the answer. The answer was, our kids are our priority. Let's help you figure out how we're going to do this. So I can't thank all of them enough, and we'll keep you advised as we move into the summer and, you know, certainly offering this wonderful program to our youth. And then finally, we're pleased to announce that, announce that this year's recipient of the John F. Kennedy Trust Fund Scholarship has been awarded to Ethan Weiner. Ethan and his mother Lori joined the Trust Fund Vice Chair Bob Jones and Scholarship Committee Chair Hugh Finley, Rep. Crocker, and Lynn Poyant, another member of the Trust, on Wednesday, June 24 at the JFK Memorial for the award. Ethan will be attending Northeastern University studying computer science in the fall. Best wishes to Ethan for his continued success. That concludes my Town Manager's report.
Thank you very much, Town Manager. Appreciate that. Any councilors have any comment, questions, remarks for our Town Manager?
Counselor Cullum has a.
Counselor Cullum?
Yes, thanks. I wondered if you could give me an idea on who's on the school reopening committee? Are, I know I'm sure there's more than one. Are they all teachers, all faculty? Is, you know, are there any representatives from the community at all on there?
I will get you that information from the superintendent. I do not know that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
Counselor Snapp.
Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for the report. I'm glad to hear that all summer programming is, is really coming into being, and I hope that our community really does follow the rules so that we can keep things open. I know another big change for us is that the transfer station on July 1, you will need a sticker to do recycling. And I know that that information probably has gone out in our newsletter and maybe in your remarks, but it, that information is not easily found on our website. And so if there's some possibility that that information could be more broadcast through the website, I'd appreciate that. There's, there's been other announcements via the transfer station, you know, when it's been reopening, but I think it, it needs just a little updating.
We, if I might, we mail directly to every single sticker holder a letter explaining it.
I think what might get missed, though, are the people who've been doing the recycling only, so even the people who have the sticker for recycling?
Only these people who have the sticker for recycling. The people who have a full sticker are all set. They have unlimited recycling stickers.
Great. That's good to know. So the person who called me probably hadn't gotten that yet. I also wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the award that Lynn Poyant recently received. I just saw it in the Barnstable Patriot, the Commonwealth heroine that's, I think, awarded by the Massachusetts Commission on Women. So I just wanted to offer our, my congratulations to Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Snapp.
Dan Santos. Paul, Dan Santos was asking to be recognized?
Yes, yes, Mr. Santos, please.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Paul had said something, and I just want to make sure it's not out there because I don't want people to misunderstand. You do not need a sticker to recycle. There are a number of alternatives that include paying for visit, but it's not required to have a sticker, but it is required to pay. And that's laid out in that letter. So I just wanted to clear, clear that up if there was any misunderstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for my helpers. I can't see the whole spectrum of the council, so I appreciate any help in identifying a council who wants to speak.
Make sure you, make sure you're on gallery view, upper right-hand corner. It should say gallery view.
That helps. But not, I still don't have everybody on there.
I'll let you know. I can see everybody. And Madam Clerk, Counselor Beedenbender has joined the meeting.
Any other councilors that would like to speak? Comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. May I ask Vice, Madam Vice President, to move on the act, act on the minutes, please?
Absolutely, Mr. President. I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 18, 2020 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we're going to do a roll call on this, please.
Counselors. Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Thank you very much. If we could open for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence, and announcements.
Counselor Lebec.
Counselor Lebec, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to echo Town Manager L's, congratulations to Ethan Weiner, who is a resident of Marston's Mills, on his being awarded the JFK Memorial. That's quite the, and it's, you know, disappointing that he's not going to be part of that ceremony. I was a part of that ceremony last year. And, but excited that, that he won that. And Ethan, again, who's a Marston's Mills resident, he also was awarded the, through the Marston's Mills Village Association, the Kevin Galvin Scholarship. And there's four scholarships that were given out. Madeline De Pietro was awarded the Sergeant Sean Gannon Scholarship. Stephanie Stiles was awarded the Nestor Newt Silver Scholarship, and Cheya Morales was also awarded a $1,000 scholarship. So kudos to those seniors, graduating seniors from Marston's Mills for being awarded and doing, working so hard and having a spirit of excellence throughout their high school career and awarded, deservingly so. And then I also wanted to mention that I was able to tour the Housing Assistance Corporation Ridgewood Avenue project that's been completed for the most part, and it's beautiful. And it's, yeah, it's amazing what they were able to do with three quarters of an acre of land and the apartments to be able to put on that. And so special thanks to Alisa Magnana, Ann Van Fleck, and David Quinn, who gave you that tour. And they, they are, I believe they have all been rented out, reserved. And another good news is that a homeless veteran will be, was awarded one of the low-income apartments there. So a veteran and somebody who was homeless was provided a home through that project. So anyway, kudos to Housing Assistance Corporation for another job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lebec. Lynn has helped me. I now have the full screen, so this is cool. Anyone else for communications? Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. I did just want to note, and I don't want to be labored because folks hear enough from me about short-term rentals, but I do want the public to know that it is on the Planning Board agenda for July 13. I will note a concern that I do have regarding the update that went out yesterday. The update suggests that the plan reflects the input of the civic associations, but it fails to note that five of the seven civic associations authored a letter opposing the plan. It also refers to input from consultants. I'm aware of one consultant that the town retained in the relationship, but that consultant was severed a year ago. Finally, there are references in the plan to renting portions of homes. That was not disclosed until the April 30 meeting, so that was never the subject of consideration by civic association. So I don't believe it properly portrays the scenario, and I do believe that we should make some effort to correct the efforts so the citizens are properly advised. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Bogan. And to, to that extent, I have a letter that came to us to make those corrections. I was hoping that it would have been read into comments this evening. So I'm just going to leave that open until July 13, 16 meeting. If someone from the group may want to read it at public comment, add to correction, and then we'll enter it into the record for correction on, on the June 18 meeting. That's how.
Mr. President, the problem with that is that it's too late. That is after the Planning Board meeting, and it is tonight that we are scheduled to consider the issue, assuming it comes back with favorable treatment from the Planning Board. So I would respectfully ask that corrective measures be taken before that.
Okay, so what, what I will do, unless it's an objection to answer to your communications, I would present this to Madam Clerk as, as I vacate the building tonight, and he, she will have the copy as sent to me to be added as a correction of the June 18 meeting minutes. And in so doing so, that would be available to the Planning Board. So I think that, that might cover, would you agree, Counselor Bogan, that that would be ample coverage?
You're muted.
Who's muted?
I was, I'm sorry. I appreciate that, Mr. President. It would seem that an appropriate remedial step is something that's as effective as what was released yesterday. I don't believe that simply appending it as an addendum to the, to the minutes of the June 18 meeting is going to do that. There was an email exchange that went out yesterday. So it seems to me that an email to that effect to the same people that received yesterday's miss would be appropriate.
I'm sorry, so you were suggesting I send an email. I did invite Mr. Schulte to read it, public comment, but this was kind of last minute, so I'm just trying to be fair to everyone. If there is. Oh.
Attorney. Attorney Nover.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that this is a requested correction. The town, you know, can take that under advisement and decide how it wishes to proceed, but this is, this is a request that is being made to the town.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender has a comment.
Yes, please.
Why not forward that email directly to the Planning Board? And while, while legal is determining what's going to happen, forward that email to the Planning Board so they have that document in hand.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Beedenbender. Counselor Bogan?
And I don't want to be labored that I said that. With all due respect to the Town Attorney, I have not made the request. It's not just a citizen request. And secondly, I don't believe simply forwarding it to the Planning Board is effective. Citizens should know. So the same level of disclosure should go out to citizens.
Mr. President, if I could, the public has every opportunity at the beginning of our meeting, and as you stated, even though this is a special meeting that does not require public comment, it is listed, and someone could have come and read the item in, in the three minutes that they're afforded. And I think we should move on since we have a big agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And so I intend to give this to the clerk just for reference, and I also will ask that it be sent to the Planning Board so that it will hopefully have gone to most of the people that are affected by this, or will be making decisions based on this information. Okay? Thank you very much. Anybody else for communications? Okay, seeing, seeing none, thank you very much. We're going to go on to the orders of the day. And I thank everyone for being here. This is your third meeting of the month, and you even came early at 6 o'clock. We have reserved tomorrow if we need another special meeting, but the only reason we'd have a special meeting tomorrow on the 26th at 6 o'clock is if we do not finish our work on the budget. So the goal of tonight is to finish the work on the budget, and then there's just a few other items to deal with. So with that being said, we're going to follow the same procedure we have in the past. We're going to start with Counselor Starr. We'll be reading in the first item, and we'll move right through all the councilors. We'll have an opportunity to take the next one from the line. So thank you very much. So, opening up old business, I'm going to ask that Counselor Starr read item number 2020156 into the record, please. Counselor Starr, you're.
You're muted, Counselor Starr. You're muted, Counselor Starr.
Counselor Starr, you're muted, please. Sarah, can you unmute him?
I got it. I got it. I got it.
Oh, there you go. Thanks.
Two screens at once here.
Got it.
Um, this is item number 2020-156, correct? This is item number 2020-156, correct? Inspection Services Department appropriation order in the amount of $2,164,880 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Inspection Services Department budget.
Second. Counselor, Counselor Hebert, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you. And do we have someone for rationale?
Brian Florence.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Florence.
Evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and Town Council members. For the record, my name is Brian Florence, your Building Commissioner and Director of Inspection Services. I'd like to thank you for your tireless work last year on behalf of the residents of the town of Barnstable and for your time and consideration this evening of the Inspection Services Department budget. Mr. President, I think I've lost my marbles. I am sitting here in my dining room at 6:30 in the evening in a tie and coat.
My nola.
But again, I thank you for your time. Our proposal today, unlike the previous two years, includes a requested increase of $24,322 or 1.14% over the 2020 budget. We have several reductions, including a $25,000 reduction in the temporary positions line item, a reduced septic information coordinator's budget of eight hours, which equals $9,913. We have various budget line item reductions we're proposing for $6,549, and a medical line item budget reduction of $7,742. And we are also requesting a deputy commissioner of inspectional, excuse me, a deputy director of inspectional services for the department. For a total budget of $21,164,879. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Florence. Do we have anyone from the public, any public comment?
There's no public comment at this time on Zoom.
Thank you.
There's no public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor now to counselors for questions, comments, addressed to the commissioner, please. Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Brian. I just want to reiterate, I've had, I have a lot of business transactions that occur through inspectional services, and through and through, they really do a great job. They're attentive, they're professional, and they're actually, they're great to work with. I do have one question. Due to the realignment, the deputy commissioner isn't asked to add one FTE. Do you have any plans or do you have someone in mind, or what's the process of getting, adding this person on, and will that person be coming from within the operation? That would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. The very first thing that we do organizationally is we open the process to internal candidates, and if somebody from internally is not selected, then it's open to the outside. Nobody's selected at this point. We are anticipating getting some candidates for that and working from that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, brief though it was. I just wanted to say that I support the addition of the deputy inspector. I know, and especially rolling forward with the STR thing, should that come up for a vote and be passed, I think it's very important that we have what we need on staff to make sure that we're delivering on inspectional services with regard to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark, do you have a question? Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Counselor President Hebert. Thank you, Commissioner Florence. I just wanted to make sure, echoing Counselor Cullen's remarks, that going forward with the concerns over short-term rentals, that the staff, that your request will cover the services that we are expecting to cover. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor. Manager, Mr. Ls would like to speak and ask a question.
I'd like to defer to Counselor Schnapp. I believe she had her hand up before me.
Thank you. Counselor Schnapp, please.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Commissioner Florence. So one of the areas that might require additional staffing going forward is the short-term rentals, but I also wonder about the uncertainty of COVID and whether we might have additional requirements on our public health. And do we feel that we're adequately staffed to be able to monitor, surveil the future?
Thank you, Counselor Schnapp.
That's not an easy question to answer. So far, we've been able to manage, and thanks to the Town Manager's Office, we brought in some additional help, a professional that works in the industry, has worked in the industry, and has been involved in incident management stuff. So he's been very helpful, he's been very, he's, his job is to support the Health Department. I think he's done a pretty good job at it, and I can't say enough about the work that Tom McKean and his staff have done during this incident. So I think we're okay, but we'll let you know if things get worse.
Thank you, Commissioner. Town Manager, please.
Can I have a quick follow-up?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you. Yes, I was asking because I know the work that is being done by our Board of Health, our, I mean, our Health Department. And with contact tracing sort of being delivered via the state, what is our role at the local level in getting involved in contact tracing?
I'll ask Director McKean to answer that.
Mr. McKean?
Thank you. We have a public health nurse. We, with, we hire contract nurses when the load gets heavy, and they conduct all of the functions that they can possibly do, including contact tracing, all of the quarantines and isolation. On rare occasions, they get transferred to the state, very rare. If, but we try to grab them all before a certain number of hours pass by. 12 hours pass by, the state will try to grab it and conduct contact tracing. But 98% of the time, our staff is doing the contact tracing, surveillance, isolation, quarantine.
And, Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
Counselor Schnapp, we are very fortunate in Barnstable that we have an in-house nurse that can take on those duties. Most communities do not. They rely on the VNA and other resources to do that. Barnstable takes the lead in that regard, and they, we keep our nurse on staff, and she's amazing at her job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Town Manager, did you have something else to say on this?
I'll wait to see if there's any further questions. I was going to try to clarify, but I think everybody's touched on the clarifications need.
Madam Vice President, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
But I'm happy to move the item if you'd like me to.
I entertain that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020-156 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. This is a vote to approve item number 2020-156, the Inspection Services Department. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen. Yes. Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
13 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask now that Counselor Stein Hilber read into the record of the day, item number 2020-157, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 2020-157, appropriation order in the amount of $10,103,252 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Works general fund budget as written.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Thank you very, very much. And I would imagine that Mr. Santos is with us.
Good evening, Mr. President. Town councilors. I'm presenting the Department of Public Works operating budget for fiscal year 21. Just as a reminder that the Department of Public Works has six divisions. Three of those divisions, Technical Support, Highway, and Structures and Ground, are funded from the general funds, and three of the remaining divisions, Solid Waste, Water Pollution Control, and Water Supply, are enterprise funds. So for the general fund budget for fiscal year proposed 21, $10,103,252, that is a 1.01% reduction over fiscal year 20. And those changes come primarily from what's shown here on the screen. And just highlight some of them, I won't run down them all. We have eliminated three positions. We're constantly reviewing our, the services we provide and the resources we utilize and in the effort of improving efficiency and reducing our costs. This year, we identified three positions that we no longer will need. We have had savings in the gasoline budget. As any of you have gone to the gas pump recently, you've noticed that gas is significantly cheaper than it was in previous years. There's savings there, diesel as well. We have significant solid waste disposal costs. We are currently going, have gone out to bid for switching over from our solid waste divisions, Packer Service, to contracted service. We believe we can save significant money there. And then a number of various line item reductions that in previous years, we haven't spent the full amount, or we don't need at this time during a time when we're trying to tighten our belts. So the end of the day, that is the general fund budget, and I'd be happy to try to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to open it up for a public hearing. I would ask help from Lynn and Sarah, if there is anyone in queue for public hearing.
There's no one on the phone. Go ahead, Sarah.
There's no one on Zoom for public comment.
Thank you.
There's no one on the phone for public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll move into now asking the counselors if they have questions or comments for Director Santos, please. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Question? Mr. President, I'd like to move that we vote on item 2020-157 as presented.
Thank you very much. This, so this is to.
Counselor Clark had a question, I think.
No, I was just seconding that.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So this, this is to approve item number 2020-157 as written. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes, thank you, Director Santos, for your leadership.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes, and I like Director Santos's vote time.
Thank you.
13 yes.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. And I totally agree. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, so it's unanimous. Thank you. I would ask Counselor Beedenbender to please read into the record of the day, item number 2020-158, again, Department of Public Works, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Counselor Beedenbender?
You're muted. Yes, hold on, I'm getting to, I'm getting it to in the agenda. Hold on.
Take your time. Oh, yes, okay. That's on page seven, if that's any help.
Yeah, I know, it's just I'm having scrolling issues.
Okay.
All right. This is old business public hearing, roll call, majority vote. How appropriate, I'm doing solid waste again. Item number 2020-158. This is appropriation order in the amount of $3,577,403 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Works Solid Waste Enterprise Fund budget as written.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a first and a second. And we're going to ask Mr. Santos again.
Thank you. We're now into our enterprise, enterprise fund budgets. We're not advancing. Okay. Solid Waste Division budget proposal for fiscal year 2021, $3,577,403. An increase of 4.61%. Primary reason that we have an increase this year is the increased cost of disposal of municipal solid waste and recyclables. If actually we were to remove that increase, we'd be showing a decrease of about 1.5%. So the total increase is wrapped up in the disposal cost. You can see here the details of that. We have reduced some seasonal positions, then a number of reductions across the budget. I just want to make it clear that we basically sharpened our pencil. We're not impacting things that directly affect our customer. A lot of line items, you know, grounds maintenance, things like that, that we've chosen different ways of doing it, areas where we haven't used as much budget, or we can postpone till the future. You can see down the bottom, the Packer Service Program, that's a reduction because we are, will be reducing by one employee for that program. And so, as I mentioned, number of reductions across line items with no reduction in service that'll be noticeable by our customers. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Santos. We're going to ask if there's anyone in queue for public hearing, please.
There's no one for public comment via Zoom.
Thank you.
There's no one for public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. We'll move into any comments, questions, or concerns from counselors, please. Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dan. Can you go into a little bit more detail about the elimination of the Packer Services? Because I think we, didn't we purchase a new vehicle for that some not too long ago? And that's regard, regarding emptying dumpsters and barrels around town? And can you just explain to the public about that, please?
Yeah, that's correct. The Packer Service Services are Main Streets, the Barrels, the Big Bellies, and it also empties all the municipal dumpsters, and that material is actually brought to Yarmouth, tipped there, and it goes to Covanta via the rail. We've done some analyses and showed that there's some savings that are available by switching over to a contract service. We do that routinely with a number of our services, look at whether it makes sense to keep continuing with an in-house service or not. The Packer was purchased a number of years ago. They do have a lifespan. We originally, we're probably going We originally, we're probably going to wait another year or so on this. We're getting to the end of that useful life of that machine. It takes a real beating. But given the reductions and the COVID situation, we thought that it made sense if we can save some money for the general fund divisions by switching over to a contracted service, then this would be the time to do that.
And one last comment, if I could. I see the enterprise fund has, has gone up a little bit from last year or from 2018. In 2018, the solid waste was down to 1.8 million. And in 2019, 2.2. So it's not increased that much, but it's nice to see, because at one time, we had 4 million in reserves in that account. So nice to see it. Hopefully, we can build, build the reserves up.
Well, that's going to take some time. As you recall from our workshop last month or in the last six weeks or so, we've been using reserves to balance the budget specifically related to the recycling costs. So we're hoping that, and as well to mitigate the price of the sticker. And so we will try to balance our cash reserves to make sure we have enough in case an emergency comes up, but also in order to mitigate the increase and over time ease them in rather than having shocking changes in the rates.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Counselor Mary.
Counselor Mary, please. Counselor Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. Just as a follow-up to your last comment, does the tipping fee and the new standardization of sticker rates, will that impact that line specifically? Or has that been, lack of a better word, been baked into the current tipping fees? The, let's just say the, again, the standardization of the rates for sticker?
Yes, we have done a rate analysis and planned our budget based on what we're seeing and what's proposed.
So that net cost of $360,000 includes the reductions achieved should everyone that is switching over to the standardized rates, that would be an additional revenue source? So that's kind of a net, a net number? Is that correct?
Well, we've tried to estimate that as best possible without-
Sure.
Hard to predict how many people are going to buy stickers and how many people are going to go to their private service. So this year will be a transition year and we'll get a real sense for how that goes. But we try to budget so that we have adequate funding to fund the operation for this year.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, any other councilors? Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020-158 as presented.
Thank you. So this is a vote to approve the item as written of item number 2020-158, Department of Public Works Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
13, yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you very much. I would ask Counselor Bogan to please read into the, into the record of the day, item number 2020-159, please.
Item number 2020-159 is Old Business Public Hearing, subject to a roll call majority. Request for appropriation order in the amount of $4,590,439 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Works Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund Budget as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Mr. Santos, please, Director.
Okay, the Water Pollution Control Division budget for fiscal year 21, proposed, $4,590,439. Reduction of $225,941, which is equivalent to a negative 4.69%. And you can see here that we have a number of one-time charges that have reduced the budget in the first, by $117,000. That's related to personnel, a vehicle, and some debt service changes for the debt service. We have reduced some temporary positions that we've had in the past. And we have, similar to other divisions, we have savings in the gasoline and diesel lines, solid waste, as I've discussed previously, and then just reductions in a number of line items that we felt that this year we could afford to come up with an overall reduction without impacting the services that were provided to our citizens and customers. So that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Director Santos. We will now open this to a public hearing. I would ask our wonderful assistants, if anyone is in queue.
No one for public comment via Zoom.
Thank you.
No one for public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. We're now open to comments, questions, and concerns by our councilors. Counselor Cullum, please.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. As a taxpayer and someone who depends upon the DPW for, for different, different needs like recycling, how do you, how do you think their experience will change based upon the reductions? I mean, I know the reductions are necessary, but just to, to see what your sense will be. I mean, I know you're trying to tighten it as, as much as you can so that those aren't really realized, but there's going to be some changes, so.
Well, so I don't believe the customer will see any change in service. Again, as I mentioned, we're trying to tighten our belt, reduce areas that are not necessarily operational, in particular with water and wastewater. We don't have a choice. We have to meet permit standards and water quality standards at whatever the cost is. So it, it does get difficult to find reductions in those areas because of the absolute mandate from the state. But we've done that and I think we've done a good job identifying those things, working with our rate consultant and with Director Milne and Town Manager and Assistant. So again, in conclusion, I don't think as a taxpayer, you're going to see or a rate payer, any, any change in your service.
Thank you for that question. Any other councilors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, I, I move that we vote on item 2020-159 as presented.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. So this is to approve as written, item number 2020-159, Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Okay, 13, yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I would ask, please, Counselor Neary to read into the record of the day, item number 2020-160.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority. Department of Public Works Water Supply Enterprise Fund. It's appropriation order in the amount of $7,865,88 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Works Water Supply Enterprise Fund Budget as written.
Second.
Director, Director Santos, please.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to apologize, I have been remiss in not introducing my division supervisors, who have been on the Zoom call, PJ Kelleher from Solid Waste, Andrew Boulay from Water Pollution Control Division, and Hans Kaiser from the Water Supply Division, who have worked very hard at putting these budgets together with all of us. So with that, and I also want to thank, in the case of the Water Supply Division, the Water Board headed by Steve O'Neill, who worked very closely with Hans and us throughout the year in representing all the rate pairs and lians. So our proposed fiscal year 21 budget in water is $7,865,88. Increase this year, $180,73 at 2.34%. We have done some cost cutting as best we can. As you may remember, this is an operation that's a contracted operation. So the vast majority of the cost for running this division is wrapped up in a contract, which has a required escalator every year. We also have significant debt service as a result of our robust capital program primarily related to the PFOS issue. And just as a very quick aside, the MAR treatment plant, which will bring three wells there back online, will be operational in September. Tomorrow, we'll be turning on the granular activated carbon system at the airport well. And next week, we'll be turning on the system at the straightaway well. So we'll be in much better condition than we were just a week ago. So you can see here that we have some chart, one-time charge in the top section, that's, that's basically increasing debt service. And below, you can see where we've tried to reduce that small amount that's not related to the contract. We did relocate a position to DPW that was at water, significant savings there. We have reduced our legal budget. We're not anticipating any legal issues this year. We've been carrying that for a while. If we had to, we could obviously go back and readdress it through the year. And then a major change is reducing our reliance on purchasing water from Yarmouth and COMN. That's been a significant cost for us, and that's why we put in the MAR treatment plant. You can see below that, the ONM cost increased for the MAR plant at $373,000. So there's some significant changes in the budget, netting out to, not a, not a tremendous increase, but indeed an increase of a couple of percent. So with that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Santos. We would ask, open this up for a public hearing, if we have anyone in queue.
No one on Zoom for this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one on the phone for public comment.
Thank you very, very much. So we'll open it up now for Counselor, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Counsel President Hebert. Thank you very much, Director Santos. Question on your first slide, what does transfers out mean? You showed a decrease in that. Thank you.
That's, that's primarily funds that go to the general fund for services that are provided, such as the in-house legal, the Director of Public Works, my staff. So all of the enterprise accounts have those transfers out to cover services that are provided by the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2020-160 as presented.
Second.
A first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve as written, item number 2020-160, Water Supply Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
13, yes.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Director. Nicely presented, and thank you for all the gentlemen that came with you. Thank you for your staff's support. If we could now, I'm going to ask Counselor Dagwan to please read into the record, item number 2020-161, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open for a public hearing, item 2020-162, appropriation order in the amount of $873,142 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Town Managers' Budget.
I think we missed it.
Actually, this is the Town Council budget. On page 10, Deborah.
Okay. I have a count for that one. You're going to leave. I just read the next number. That's okay. I'll go to the next one. No fun about it. Town Council Department, this is item 2020-161, Old Business, and it's an appropriation order in the amount of $286,659 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Town Council Budget. It's open for a public hearing, a roll call, majority vote.
Second.
Thank you. We had a first and a second. And Town Manager Ellis, please.
Town Manager Mark Ellis, with your permission, President Hebert, I would ask that Mark Milne present the Town Council budget and continue with the presentation of the remainder of the budget.
Okay. Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, councilors, Manager Ellis, and staff. Let me share my screen here. The Town Council budget for fiscal year 21 is increasing $17,672.65%. Personnel costs are increasing $20,700, and that's offset by a reduction in operating expenses of $3,028. About 84% of this budget is funding, funded through taxes, with the remaining 15% funded from enterprise fund reimbursements and reserves. These are the major changes to the budget for fiscal year 21 proposed. We had a great, a cost of a grade change for the council administrator's position, as well as a one-time payment for some past performance evaluations. And we're providing additional funding for some part-time coverage for when the council administrator is not in the office. And we're offsetting that cost again by a reduction in the training and conference budget line item of $3,028. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just, thank you very much. This is open for a public hearing. I would ask if anyone is in queue for public hearing, please.
No public comment at this time via Zoom.
Thank you.
No public comment on the phone at this time.
Thank you very much. I will now open this up for council comment.
Counselor Beeden Mender.
Counselor Beeden Mender, please.
Thank you very much. So just a question about the missed performance, the one-time payment on the missed performance evaluations. Can you just address that so that, so we have a better understanding of what happened and why, and if we can avoid it?
Yes, this, the council is responsible for the performance evaluation of the council's administrative position, and that was not done for, I believe, three years, three or four years. And so at the end of every fiscal year, which is right about now, every department had, does a performance evaluation on their staff- every department does a performance evaluation on their staff, and the council should do a performance evaluation on the council administrator position.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. Does that answer your question, Councilor Beeden Bender?
Will that be coming across our docket soon?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. What did you say, Councilor?
So I wanted to make sure that we didn't incur another $8,000 cost for missing evaluations. And so I asked if that was going to be coming across the Town Council docket soon, and Mr. Mill said yes.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors?
Councilor Clark has a question.
Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate Councilor Beeden Bender's remarks. Whose responsibility is this, and how do we not prevent this from tripping in the future, given that there's a regular turnover of councilors? Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Sorry.
Thank you very much, if you don't mind, Mr. Mill. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but I have to tell you that we don't have a procedure. When people get elected to be the president, and they have a lot on their plate, and this is an area that somebody could easily miss. And so I made it my point to look it up and realize that we had a responsibility, and that it had been overlooked by accident by previous presidents. And I can fully understand, believe me, how that could happen. So we've corrected that, and I think I'm in the process, along with the administrator, to do two kind of booklets, if you will, just a couple of pages that explain the real task, the responsibility of the president in terms of running the office and working on the budget. So we put a lot of time into reevaluating, cleaning that up, adjusting the budget. And in fact, next year, if my projections are correct, we will have less of a budget than we are operating under currently. So it was well worth the exercise of bringing this up to speed.
Also, if I could, and it's not the entire council that does the review of the administrator. It's usually the leadership and previous past presidents that do the review. And as Council President Hebert said, the previous past president and vice president neglected to do a review.
And unfortunately, Jim was in the process of it, and he was not able to complete that. So that would have been done earlier if Jim had not passed on. And also, Town Manager Ellis would like to speak.
I would just offer, we do this routinely every year. We do a mid-year and an end-of-year. And what I can do, either I could ask Human Resources to share the one that we do as a flag to the leadership and a reminder. And you know, obviously, you can follow your procedure and your evaluation tool with our assistance or not. That's up to the Town Council Office. But we can send you that flag every year because we send it to ourselves just as a reminder. And that way, it'll at least prompt that internal discussion.
Better to have more flags than not enough. Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilor Cullum, please.
Yes, thank you. I was going to suggest that HR somehow send us a memo because that seems to be where the department that would be handling it. So I think that's an apt observation. You know, and in regards to, you know, writing memos for future presidents and all that other stuff, I have to say, over the last few weeks, I've given a lot of thought to that. And I did a couple of elections ago, too, about how people entering the Town Council or entering the school committee has been my most recent thought, don't have a lot of guidance and training, and don't have maybe any sort of a flow chart to follow. And it's a really overwhelming job to be elected and suddenly have all this responsibility in your lap. So to that end, I was thinking about reaching out to the MMA or asking them to put together a training manual or something along those lines for elected officials. So I just thought I'd bring that up since we've mentioned that. And I think the school committee should also have something like that. And then the other thing I wanted to say was we must be saving a ton of money on coffee.
Thank you, Councilor Cullum. I believe Madam Vice President had a comment.
No, I'm all set. I'm ready to move the question unless there's other comments. Seeing none, I make a motion that we move to vote on item 2020-161 as presented.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. This is to approve item number 2020-161, as written, Town Council Department. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. I would ask Councilor Shaughnessy to please read in item number 2020-162, Town Manager's Department.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is old business, public hearing, subject to a roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-162, an appropriation order in the amount of $873,142 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Town Manager Budget.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Millen, Finance Director. The Town Manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 21 is $873,142, or a $103,891 increase, 13.5%. 70% of this budget is funded with taxes, lease payments on town-owned property, funds above another 15%, with enterprise funds funding 13%, and then a small portion from fees and permits issued by the Town Manager's Office. The major changes for the regions for the increase in this budget are really just a transfer of personnel from one department to another. We have created the new Communications Director's position in fiscal year 20, and the additional funding for a full fiscal year of $21,391 is being provided in the fiscal year 21 budget. And we're transferring the full-time web developer position from the Community Services Department to this department for fiscal year 21. Those costs are being partially offset by reductions in operating expenses of $11,000. We'll have one Citizens Academy as opposed to two, and a reduction in the training and conference budget of $5,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mill. We will now open this for a public hearing. Is there anyone in queue, please?
There's no one via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
There's no public comment via phone at this time.
Thank you very much. I will now open it for councilors' comments, questions. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-162 as presented.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a first and a second. So this is to approve item number 2020-162, Town Manager Department. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Thank you. Just to let everyone know, it is now 7:23. I plan to take a break at 8 o'clock, just for your information. Thank you very much. If Councilor Levet could please read into the orders of the day, item number 2020-163.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-163, appropriation order in the amount of $841,030 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Public Education and Government Access Channel Enterprise Fund Budget. That goes right.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Mr. Millen, please.
Mark Millen, Finance Director. Thank you, Mr. President. This is our Public Education and Government Access Channels Enterprise Fund. This is the fourth year that we've been running this operation as an enterprise fund. The budget for fiscal year 21 is proposed at $841,030, for about a $36,000 reduction from the approved fiscal year 2020 budget. Changes reflected in this proposed budget include one-time costs that were included in the capital outlay budget for fiscal year 2020 not being repeated of $42,000. We're reducing temporary positions for $30,000. Those were hourly positions that were no longer needed. We are funding the other portion of the new Communications Director out of this fund. 40% of the funding for that position comes from this enterprise operation. We are eliminating the funding for the Community Services Director, which is now fully funded under the general fund. So that comes out of this fund as it no longer oversees this operation. And we are reducing the Channel 22 funding request by $13,000 in fiscal year 21. And we are providing $30,000 of funding for a lighting upgrade in the TV studio over at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. We'll open it up now for a public hearing. I would ask if there's anyone in queue, please.
No one via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
There's no public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. I will now open it up to councilors for comments, questions. Councilor Beeden Bender, please.
Thank you. A question, if you recall, it was about 12 months, 16 months ago that we were hearing about the telecom industry pushing back on fees that they would be paying to towns, and that we knew that our PEG services might suffer quite significantly as a result. Just curious where that sits at this point, if there's any news on that?
We have not seen any financial impact from that FCC ruling at this point. In fact, our last quarterly payment from the cable licensing agreement was significantly more than the previous quarter. As far as its status, from a legal perspective, I'll defer to Attorney Nova if she knows of any updates on that.
I don't at this time.
Okay, does that answer your question, Councilor? Beeden Bender? Yeah, okay. Good. Thank you very much. Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Sorry, my question was just answered.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Schnep.
Same here.
Oh, great minds all think alike. Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that our payment was lodged and anticipated. That's a good thing.
Councilor Neary has a question.
Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. Just a quick question, the lighting. I'm just curious why that would fall outside of the school budget and be in this budget?
Just a question. It's associated with the studio. Where Channel 22 is operated out of. And so we fund all the cost of developing and maintaining and replacing equipment for both Channel 18, Channel 22.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-163 as presented.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve, as written, item number 2020-163, Public Education and Government Access Channels Enterprise Fund. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beeden Mender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levet.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. I would ask Councilor Clark to please read into the record, item number 2020-164.
Thank you, Council President Hebert. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority on 2020-164. The appropriation order in the amount of, I get it right this time, for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Administrative Services Department Budget.
Second.
We have a first and a second. I would ask Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Millen, Finance Director. The Administrative Services Department includes four sub-departments, who I must say have really haven't missed a beat since this public health emergency came about. Managed even with a major transition in staffing and the legal operations, a consolidation of Treasury and Tax Collector's offices in the month of January, transitioning to a remote workforce and the help of the technology division, as well as all of the support from Human Resources, who have gone above and beyond supporting our staff throughout this difficult and stressful time. So this budget includes those four operations, financing, resources, legal, information, technology. The proposed budget for fiscal year 21 is decreasing $83,056, or 1.31%. A little more than half the budget is funded from taxes, with the remaining portion of the budget being funded with fees, intergovernmental aid, and reserves. Major changes to the budget from last year include a one-time cost of $84,000 in capital outlay for voting machines that is not being repeated, a reduction of a .2 FTE in legal office clerk's positions across the board, reductions in overtime and temporary positions in all four divisions, as well as various line items across the board and off divisions being reduced by a total of $71,000. Some of the major increases include funding for an MPA program for several town staff. This helps with our succession planning and staff development in-house as we try to develop a higher-level staff to eventually fill positions like we mentioned earlier this evening with a deputy building commissioner position being created. This type of program allows us to evolve our staff in the future. That succession planning, that's so important. And we also have a one-time funding for the vision appraisal software that we use as appraisal system. That's going to cost $67,000 at the one-time expense. The version that we're on right now will no longer be supported in another year. So much to transition to a newer version. Then we have our standard software licenses increased in our information technology division, which covers a myriad of different software applications that we use townwide. And these fees pay for the support and licensing costs associated with all those applications. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mill. We're going to see if there's anybody in queue of public hearing, please.
No public comment via Zoom.
No public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. We're going to close public hearing, and we'll open it for questions and comments by our councilors. Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. And I see our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Cole, is here. Could you just tell us how many employees are working from home, how many are actually physically in place, or what's the status there? Bill.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. As Director Millen had alluded to, we had transitioned very quickly to a very remote workforce, and that has slowly turned back to more of a traditional. But at any given time, every day, there's about 160 to 170 employees working remotely. And then there's probably anywhere between 275 to 300 physically at work in buildings out in the field. So that's where we are now.
Thank you.
Councilor Beedenbender, please.
Out of curiosity, because a lot of businesses are going through this and recognizing that what they didn't realize was possible from home is now possible, and it could also lead to longer-term cost savings by not having to carry so much overhead with an entire staff in a building. So just curious if there's any conversation about perhaps down the road, whether it's, you know, five years, or seven years, or three years, whatever it is, of taking what we've learned from COVID, that we can, if we're tech-enabled, we can do whatever we need from our homes. If we're tech-enabled and we have the signal that's required. So just out of curiosity, if there's any thought about reducing overhead, going in this direction of more people working from home at some point? Thank you.
I see Mark Els has.
Yes, Manager Els, please.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Thank you for that question. Yes, now, we are not going back to the way that we used to provide service. And partly because we have found efficiencies and partly because I don't know when this will end, and much of what we do is essential for people to live and for people to do business. So we are actively and have been, since this commenced in March, looking at how we do things. And I can't say enough about our staff in transitioning from a traditional workforce to 170 people working from home. All of our staff is working. We haven't missed a beat, and we've managed the largest health crisis maybe in our country's history, certainly in the last 50 years. We've managed a financial crisis. And now we are assisting our community to recover, on top of doing what we do every single day. So I don't often, you know, make statements like that, but that is what your town staff and employees have done over the last four months. And now myself and Assistant Town Manager Clyburn and Director Millen-Cole, as a kind of senior team, are working with all of our departments. And as we begin to move into fiscal 2022, we're doing exactly what you've just asked. And it will look very different when we're done. And we need to let our public know this. I get many questions about this. And we probably will be looking at, you know, even medium-range need for facilities and the types of positions, and should they be modified? And will the skill set of our existing employees and the training they receive and our future employees need to be different to help us work remotely, to help us provide contactless service, to help us utilize the many technologies that we will have to engage to be able to do this in the future. So it's an exciting time, quite honestly. There isn't a person that I work with who hasn't embraced this and isn't looking forward to the opportunity to deliver high-quality service in whatever the future holds for us. And I hope we get through this, the health side of this as quickly as possible. But we've got years of transition, and we are well into that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Els.
Just a quick follow-up. I just want to say that I wish I had led with an acknowledgement of the incredible job that the staff is doing at the town of Barnstable, because it has been quite impressive. And as you mentioned, not a beat has skipped since day one. So thank you to your entire staff for doing an exemplary job.
Councilor Cullum, that was a question.
Councilor Cullum, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I agree with you. The staff has been tireless in their efforts, and they've been excellent at modifying their normal game plan, but it's really due to strong leadership of the senior management team that has made that come to fruition. And I'm excited to be a part of it. I think it's excellent. I love to watch it. It's, your devotion to the town is very clear, as is Director Mills and Director Santos's and Katie's services and the Chief of Police. And it's excellent to see it all come together and that, you know, we were looking far beyond COVID and far beyond maintaining what we, all the spinning plates that we have, but looking for new plates to spin, new opportunities to reach forward and a new way of thinking, with the ultimate goal being to elevate the life and times of people that live in the town of Barnstable. So I really look forward to conversations moving forward about how to help other departments do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cullum. Any other councilors' comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-164 as presented.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a first and a second. So this is a vote to approve item as written, number 2020-164, Administrative Services Department. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Snet. Yes. Shaughnessy. Yes. Starr.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Thank you. I would ask Councilor Snet to kindly read into the minutes of the day, item number 2020-165.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of Old Business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority. Item 2020-165, appropriation order on of $250,000 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 reserve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Mr. Millen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Millen, Finance Director. This will be the third year in a row that we've actually appropriated a reserve fund for the town council. This is allowed under Chapter 40, Section 5A of the Mass General laws. It could be as much as 5% of our tax limit, which is about $6 million. But we don't feel it's necessary to have a council reserve fund at that level. No direct drafts can be made against this reserve fund. We must come to the council and ask for a transfer from the reserve in order to access it. The past two years, we have done so. One time, we had a sand replenishment program in Sandy Neck that we had to access this reserve fund for. And during this past fiscal year, we had to replace a condenser over at the HYCC. Having a reserve fund like this provides us an opportunity to respond very quickly to an emergency situation. Normally, as you know, a appropriation order before the town council will take two readings, and then it's a three-day reading period after approval before we can access those funds for contracting. Having this reserve fund in place allows us to address those smaller emergencies in a timely manner. And then any funds that aren't used at the end of the year will get returned to the general fund surplus. And we anticipate returning $159,000 up in reserve this year at the close of fiscal year 20. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Millen. I will ask if we have the openness for public hearing. Is there anyone in queue, please?
There's no public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone at this time.
Thank you very much. Open it up for councilors' comments, suggestions, thoughts, questions. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-165 as presented.
Thank you very much. So this, this is a vote to approve item number 2020-165 as written, the Town Council Reserve Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Shaughnessy. Yes. Starr.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snet. Yes. Thirteen yes.
Thank you very, very much. I would now ask Councilor Cullum to kindly read into the minutes of the day, the orders of the day, item number 2020-166, Other Requirements of the Budget.
Yes, item number 2020-166, appropriation order in the amount of $50,994,976 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2021 Other Requirements budget as written. This is a public hearing with a roll call majority.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilor. We have a first and a second. Mr. Millen, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Millen, Director of Finance. This is a collection of all other costs incurred in the general fund that aren't associated specifically with the departmental operation. Most of this funding for these costs are provided from taxes, or about 78%. The total costs have risen from $58 million and improved in fiscal year 17 to about $64.3 million in fiscal year 2021. The major categories of costs in this area are, first of all, employee benefits. We are actually seeing a reduction in employee benefits of $130,000 in fiscal year 21. There is no rate increase for health insurance in fiscal year 21, which is the good news for all employees and municipal budgets. We are continuing with our effort to continue to increase the funding for the other post-employment benefits contribution. That is increasing another $50,000 to $600,000. We have over $5 million in that account now, and we feel strongly that we need to continue to increase the funding for that obligation. Retirement assessment is up 2.3% to $10.6 million. And no increase in health insurance, actually a slight reduction as a result of employees transitioning to less costly plans. We are reducing our workers' compensation appropriation by $400,000. We have a $4 million reserve in that fund, so we believe we can decrease the appropriation into that fund for fiscal year 21. Our debt service budget is down $585,000 as a result of some expiring bonds. The regional school district assessment for Cape Cod Tech is going down $263,000 to $5,856,000. Our charter school and school choice assessments are increasing 7%, or about $359,000. State and county assessments are increasing about 7.3%. That includes the county tax and the Cape Cod Commission assessment. Those are the two biggest parts of that. And property and liability insurance is increasing $50,000. We are reducing the grants to the Seven Village Libraries by 2%, $38,000. The Veterans District budget is level funded at $400,000. The Town Council Reserve, which you just appropriated, is included in this area. The celebrations and Lombard lease land that we leased from the Lombard Fund is level funded for $172,000. We're reducing the tourism grant by $50,000 to $127,000, which is where it has been for several years. We have no snow and ice deficit this year, which is good news due to the mild winter. And we are increasing the transfer to the Capital Trust Fund by about 2.5% or $10,442,000. And the transfers to the enterprise funds, which have already been appropriated and under previous appropriations, are included in this category as well. So that all totals to $64,346,000. Several of these items have already been appropriated or do not require appropriation, and that includes retired teachers' health insurance costs, charter schools, and school choice assessments, state and county assessments, which all become part of our cherry sheet that we receive from the state every year, which details the costs assessed to communities. And the transfers to the enterprise funds have already been appropriated, as well as the town council reserve. So the bottom-line appropriation is $50,994,976, and that's about almost a 2% decrease from the previous year. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Millen. We will now open public hearing. I would ask if there's anyone in queue for public hearing, please.
No public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone at this time.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, we will close public hearing, and I will open it for our councilors' questions, concerns, comments. Councilor Snet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. Could you explain whether the health insurance that is included in this line item for the school budget, how does that relate to the 60-40 split? Is there, is that part of what's in here, count toward the 60%?
So the way the 60-40 split works is that we take this category of cost, we estimate what this category of cost is going to change by, and first we cover that, any increase in that cost from any growth in revenue that we have, which gives us a net amount of new revenue growth that gets split 60-40. And so this is the first area of the budget that we cover before we allocate any remaining revenue on a 60-40 basis. A lot of these costs include both municipal, like health insurance, includes health insurance for all employees, all municipal employees except the enterprise funds, as well as all school employees.
Right. But the actual 60-40 includes the portion of health insurance that is part of the school budget?
No, we, it's all baked into this one budget for fixed costs. And then whatever that increase is, we reduce it, we reduce that from the new growth in revenue, and that net amount of new growth in revenue then is divided 60-40. So it's before, we don't, we don't say the increase in health insurance for school employees comes off that 60-40.
I'm not talking about the increase. I'm just talking about the actual cost. So I'm just, I'm looking at the total cost for our school, to support our schools. Is it more than 60% because you have to take a portion of this budget? Or is that 60-40 split inclusive of the health insurance costs for the staff?
Yeah, so the additional, there are more costs to fund the school operations included in this budget. For example, debt service includes debt service for school projects. Health insurance costs includes health insurance for school employees. So there's a number of categories within this budget that are associated indirectly with the school operations.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that, Councilor Snet?
I think so. But again, as we move forward in our strategic planning, I think it'll be important to really understand what, where our costs fall across all of our different endeavors.
Thank you for that question. Thank you, Mr. Millen, for explaining that to us. Thank you. Any other councilors?
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-166 as presented.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve the item 2020-166 as we read, which are the other requirements of the budget. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors? Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Krasetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous. I would ask, and it's not that I am avoiding Madam Vice President, but Madam Vice President helps keep me going straight. So I'm going to Counselor Starr again, top of the page. If Counselor Starr could please read into the record for us, item number 2020-167, please.
You're muted, Counselor Starr.
How's that better?
There you go.
Now I gotta go find it. Okay. Thank you. This is item 2020-167, Community Preservation Fund Administration Expenses and Fiscal Year 2021 Program Set Asides. So appropriation order in the amount of $2,599,499 for fiscal year, Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2021 Set Asides.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. Mr. Millen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Mellon, Finance Director. Every year, we have to set aside a minimum of 10% of the estimated revenue that the Community Preservation Fund is to generate. So for fiscal year 21, we're estimating a total of $4,232,000 to be estimated, to be generated through cert taxes as well as state matching funds. So 10% of that amount needs to be set aside for each of the program areas, including open space recreation, historic preservation, and community housing. And then we must commit to funding the land bank debt service that was brought forward from the old land bank program. And then we also have a $200,000 administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee. The remaining funds after all of those leaves us with a budget reserve of $1,030,740. That budget reserve can be used for any one of those three program areas. In order for the Community Preservation Committee to access that, of course, they need to come to the Town Council for appropriation. So this is the budget for the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 21, including the minimum set asides, debt service, and after setting aside an amount for debt service and CPC administrative budget, we still have a budget reserve of $1,030,000. After any answer any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Millen. I will open this for public hearing. I would ask if there's anyone in queue for public hearing, please.
Lindsay, are you here for public comment or just support?
Sorry?
I was asking Lindsay, Counselor, he's on, but I wasn't sure if he was here for public comment or just support.
I'm just here for support.
Okay, no public comment at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment on the phone.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that clarification also. So we will now close public hearing, and we'll open this up for councilors, questions, comments. Counselor Clark, please.
Very much, Counselor President Hebert, and I did have a pleasant conversation with Lindsay, Counselor, earlier today, but it was asked of me, what is the breakdown for the $200,000 of administrative expenses for the CPC, please?
Mark, do you want to take that question, or should I?
I'll take that. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Counselor. The $200,000, the Community Preservation Committee employs one full-time staff person. The cost of salary and benefits associated with that is about $90,000, leaving about $110,000 for administrative expenses, and that is to provide them funding to cover things like outside legal services if they need to acquire those appraisal, appraisers, studies, if they need to have a study performed, so it gives them the flexibility to have the funding to conduct any large administrative expense that may be needed for the fiscal year. If they don't have to spend all of that, in fact, they're going to return some money this fiscal year. Any unspent administrative funds just go back to the Community Preservation Fund's surplus.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-167 as presented.
Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve, as written, item number 2020-167, Community Preservation Fund Administrative Expenses and the Fiscal Year 2021 Program Set Asides. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors? Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Krasetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, councilors. We've done very, very well. It is now 8 o'clock. We're going to take a seven-minute recess. If I say five or 10, that doesn't make sense. So we'll go with seven-minute recess. See you all back here as close to 8:00 or 7:00 as you can. Thank you.
Okay, so Sarah, we're gonna open back up.
You're all set. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I would thank you for all coming back and I would ask that we would start with Counselor Steinheilberg. If you would read into the record, item number 2020-168, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. Like to open the public hearing on item 2020-168. Appropriation order in the amount of $1,820,347 for the purpose of paying the town's fiscal year 2021 Community Preservation Fund debt service requirements as written.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I believe Mr. Mill is still with us. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Mill, Finance Director. As this table illustrates, this is the debt service requirements for the Community Preservation Fund for the next several years. The budget for fiscal year '21 is $1,820,347. $1,732 is being provided from the estimated current year revenue to be generated by the fund. And $88,000 will be provided from the set aside for historic preservation for the debt service associated with the town hall renovation project. You'll also notice there's a significant drop off in debt service in fiscal year '23 as well as fiscal year '24 as most of those bonds under the former Land Bank program will be expiring then. Or offering up an opportunity for this fund to really invest in the community in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mill. I would now open this up for a public hearing. And could we see if there's anyone in queue?
No public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone.
Thank you very, very much. I will now open, I will close public hearing and I will open this up for questions and comments from the counselors. Counselor Snep, did you have a question?
No.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-168 as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve as written item number 2020-168 Community Preservation Fund fiscal year '21 debt service. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilberg.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous. I would now ask Counselor Beedenbender to kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2020-169, please.
All right. This is for a public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-169. Comprehensive wastewater management and private way improvement fund fiscal year 2020 operating budget. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $585,264 for the purpose of paying the town's fiscal year 2021 Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Improvement Fund debt service requirements.
Second.
As written.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a first and a second. Who is speaking on this? Mr. Mill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mark Mill, Finance Director. Here are the debt obligations for the next five years for the, for this fund. This is mainly, this is comprised of the West Main Street pump station as well as the Stewart's Creek sewer expansion project and the two recent land acquisitions, one in Centerville and one on Route 28, Calhoun Road. And this funding for these loan requirements is provided from the Comprehensive Wastewater Management and Private Way Improvement Fund. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. We will now open this for a public hearing. I would ask if there's anyone in queue, please.
There's no public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. Open it up for, I will now close public hearing and I will open this up for counselors.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-169 as presented.
Second.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve as written item number 2020-169 Comprehensive Water Management and Private Way Improvements Fund for fiscal year 2021 operating budget. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilberg.
You're muted, Eric.
Steinheilberg.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much, Counselors. That's unanimous. Thank you. I would ask Counselor Bogan to kindly read into the record of the day, item number 2020-170. Official year 2021 revolving fund spending limits.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2020-170 is public hearing, old business, subject to a roll call majority. It seeks a resolution that the town is hereby authorized to incur the following spending limitations for fiscal year 2021 revolving funds. Senior Services Classroom Education Fund, $100,000. Recreation Program Fund, $525,000. Shellfish Propagation Fund, $200,000. Consumer Protection Fund, $600,000. Geographical Information Technology Fund, $10,000. Arts and Culture Program Fund in the amount of $50,000. And finally, Asset Management Fund, $500,000 as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the final item associated with the fiscal year '21 proposed budget. These are the six revolving funds that the town operates, or seven revolving funds. There are two spending limitations associated with revolving funds. They can't spend more than the amounts that are listed here in this resolve or the lesser of that or the amount of revenue that they actually generate in the year. The only change to the spending limitations here are the Consumer Protection Fund, which runs our weights and measures program. That one has increased from $450,000 to $600,000. And that's a result of entering into contractual arrangements with several other Cape towns to provide services for those towns for which we will now be compensated for in fiscal year '21. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mill. I'm going to now open this up for a public hearing and I will ask if we have anyone in queue, please.
No public comment via Zoom at this time.
Thank you.
No public comment via phone.
Thank you very much. Hearing done, we will close public hearing and I will now open it up for questions and comments from the counselors.
Mr. President, I move that we vote on item 2020-170 as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve as written item number 2020-170 fiscal year 2021 revolving fund spending limits. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilberg.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So that ends the end of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget orders. Counselors, congratulations.
Yes.
What I'd like to do now is move to new business. If you don't mind, or look at item number 2020-194. And that's found on page 34. And I'm gonna, and we're gonna open that, refer that to a public hearing. I'm gonna ask Counselor Neary to please read that in on page 34.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business to be referred to a public hearing on July 16, 2020. It's item 2020-194. It's a supplemental appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $277,600 for the fiscal year 2020 Airport Capital Budget for the purpose of funding the airport capital improvement projects for mitigation of per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, and 1-4-dioxin as written.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to refer to public hearing, item number 2020-194. Do we have a motion, please?
That was the motion. I think all we need is a roll call.
Okay, roll call for approval of item number 2020-194. Madam Clerk.
Janet, you're not, you're muted.
Excuse me. Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilberg.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Thank you. I would ask Counselor Dagwan to please read into the record today, item number 2020-195.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the new business, item 2020-195, ratification of a vote to appropriate and transfer $400,000 of community preservation funds for the creation of four affordable rental units located at 560 West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. The site may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Second.
Who's Mr., who's going, Mr. Counsel, are you talking, speaking on this?
Yes, I'm available, Mr. Council President.
So could you read in the rationale, please?
One second. Yes. It's resolved that the Town Council hereby ratifies and clarifies the vote taken on April 2, 2020, to approve Town Council Order 2020-136 that pursuant to the provisions of the Community Preservation Act, General Law, Chapter 44B, the sum of $400,000 in no sense be appropriated and transferred from the undesignated funds portion of the Community Preservation Fund and that the town manager is authorized to contract for and expend the amount appropriated and transferred for the purpose of creating community housing consisting of three affordable deed-restricted residential studio apartments restricted at 80% area median income and one studio unit restricted at 65% area median income within a 14-unit apartment redevelopment project called Midpoint Apartments located at 560 West Main Street, Hyannis. With the ability of the units to float and the four affordable studio units are to be held in affordable in perpetuity and that the town manager is further authorized to execute, deliver, and record documents in restrictions for the stated purpose, subject to restrictions as provided in General Law, Chapter 44B, for the stated purpose in the oversight of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. We will now open this up to any questions, comments from our counselors.
Mr. President, seeing none, I move that we vote on item 2020-194 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and we have a second. Thank you very, very much. So this is a vote to approve item number 2020-195. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors. Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilberg.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jake, and thank you, Mr. Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you to our CPC for working so hard on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've done well and what we'd like to do now is, if you would, if we go to packets and starting at page 20 through page 38, the last item that we have right now is item number 2020-185. So I would ask Counselor Shaughnessy to please read this into the record of the day, item number 2020-185, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is old business being referred to a public hearing. Sorry, not being referred, public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number 2020-185, authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and Airview LLC.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, point of order.
Yes. Counselor Snep, please.
Yes, I believe that this item should be a two-thirds vote.
Yes.
It's requiring changes, waivers of zoning requirements, which by our code, it requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay, I will, I will refer to the attorney, Karen Nova.
Would you mind if we took a two-minute break so I can just double check on that?
Certainly, yes. Okay, yes, we will take a two-minute break. We do have people speak on this, so it's a big issue. Thank you, Counselor Snep, for clarifying this. Thank you.
Yes, it is a two-thirds vote. Counselor Schnep is correct.
That's if we accept all the waivers.
It's if you're approving it. I'd have to take a look at what each waiver is, but... You're muted, Paul.
Thank you, thank you. So we're going to enter into this and I want to give it reasonable amount of time, but I don't want to rush this discussion. And at any point, if counselors feel we need to have another evening of this, but we are starting rather early, so I'm very pleased that maybe we can attack this tonight, but let's, let's work together on this. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, should we just clarify that we are on live because I know you said to take a break? Let's check, check with Sarah.
You're on. You're all set. Go ahead.
Okay, and we have our quorum back, right? Do we need to take a vote on quorum? No, okay, nobody's left us. Thank you very much. So have we read this in, the item?
Yes.
We have, okay. Thank you very much. So we have the rationale here. I think that Elizabeth Jenkins and her team are ready to speak on this.
Thank you, President Hebert. Elizabeth Jenkins. With your permission, I would like to defer introduction of the item to Senior Planner Paul Wackrow and then have the applicant make a presentation on the rationale. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wackrow, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. For the record, Paul Wackrow, Planning and Development. And I'm going to give a quick overview of the application before you. Item 2020-185 is an application for regulatory agreements under chapter 168 of the town code. The proposal includes the redevelopment of three parcels at 467 and 451 Ino Road in Hyannis. This is the former site of Mitchell's Restaurant and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post. The site is located within the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. As proposed, the redevelopment before you includes the construction of a 10,000-foot pharmacy with a drive-through pickup window and a 6,000-square-foot retail building. The draft regulatory agreement seeks waivers from the zoning ordinance and from chapter 115 of the town code related to hours of operations and businesses. 115 of the Town Code related to hours of operations of businesses. The project was found approvable by the Site Plan Committee, a Site Plan Review Committee, and was recommended by the Planning Board following four public hearings, and I believe Attorney John Kenny is available to give the rationale.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kenny, please. Mr. Kenny, you're muted. Mr. Kenny, you're muted.
I just saw that, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Town Council, for the record, my name's John Kenny. I'm an attorney in the Law Office in Centerville. To come before you this evening via Zoom, representing Airview LLC, with me is Stuart Bornstein, who's a manager of Airview LLC, and joining us will be Matt Eddy from Baxter Nye Engineering, who's a project engineer, and Randy Hart from Van Ness Hagen, Russland Inc., a principal of them, who's our traffic consultant. I believe they'll be joining in shortly. I put a call into Randy, and I know Stuart put a call into Matt to let him know that this item was coming up. I'm going to give you a little bit of background and the development proposal history on this. I started working on this in January of 2019. We went to the Site Plan Review for informal review on April 16, 2019, and formal review on April 18, 2019. The following month, we had a meeting with the town manager, put some members of the planning staff and members in the legal department. That was on May 15, 2019, to review the project, some of the requested waivers, et cetera. On May 17, 2019, we received the FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation, and as a result of meeting that requirement, we received our Site Plan Review Approval Letter on July 2, 2019. Shortly thereafter, the Mass DOT issued their final determination that the project does not violate airspace laws, and that was issued on July 17, 2019. And then we got the jurisdictional determination letter from the Building Commissioner sent to the Cape Cod Commission November 27, 2019. And with all of that, it kind of teed us up to start before the Planning Board. And as Paul just stated, we had four hearings before the Planning Board. There were many changes to the site plan, the building design, and signage. The planning board process resulted in the building design that meets the Hyannis Design and Infrastructure Plan. That's more consistent with the surrounding area. When we started looking at the building design and looked at the area, Wendy's was recently done, it's not in the GIs, but it's in the general area, the Audi dealership, the CVS and Citizens Bank, the Kentucky Fried Chicken Taco Bell, and now the recent perimeter upgrades to Staples. These are all in the general vicinity of our project, all kind of a more of an upscale, I would say, more modern look, but a very nice look and kind of fits the general development that's going on in the downtown Hyannis area. Planning Board process also resulted in a substantial reduction in number of waivers requested. Now get to those waivers shortly, but as Paul said, after four hearings before the Planning Board, many plant, site plan changes, building design changes, reduction of waivers, the Planning Board voted unanimously on May 13, 2020, to recommend the regulatory agreement to the Town Council. Regulatory agreement contains many community benefits. First and foremost, in my opinion, is Mr. Bornstein's willingness to develop in a blighted area and tear down some blighted buildings and redevelop them, which significantly improves aesthetics on this gateway property into Hyannis. There's a reduction and redesign of curb cuts onto Route 28. Currently, there are three open curb cuts, which are, you can go left, you can go right. If you want to take your life into hands, you want to come out and go left, you can. There are three wide-open curb cuts. It consolidated down into two entrances with defined geometry, meeting town and state standards, and the curb cut nearest the rotary is a right-in-only. The next curb cut further down towards the railroad tracks is right-in, right-out only, and we obtained an easement to have a right-in, right-out only onto Barnstable Road. That easement access would actually be, in meeting with the Hyannis Fire Department, they prefer it in primary access to the site. Also is community benefits substantially increased landscaping, a reduction in impervious coverage, sidewalk along Route 28 along the frontage of our property, safe and well-marked interior pedestrian connections, exterior site lighting with LED lights, introduction of stormwater management in onsite water infiltration with low-impact design measures including biofiltration drainage areas. Currently, there is no stormwater management on this property. The stormwater just runs off in sheets onto the budding roads. We have new underground utility connections. That's an added expense, but we're putting the utilities, which is another aesthetic improvement, an installation of two fire hydrants and areas identified by Hyannis Fire Department and Water Department as to where they wanted them, so there'll be two new fire hydrants to service the general area. In connection with that, we're removing the existing six-inch water line back to the main along Route 28, replacing it with two new two-inch lines, one for each building, and two new fire service lines, one for each fire hydrant. In relief requested, the waivers, and I know probably the initial reaction when you looked at the waivers was, wow, there are a lot of waivers. It looks like a lot, and I think that was the initial reaction to the Planning Board as well. But when you look at the waivers on this, you have to look at the substance of the waivers, not the number. And it really boiled down to a few simple things. First, there are two types. There's a Town Code, as Paul mentioned, and that is simply to allow the drive-through window and the drive-through window only, not the entire Walgreens store, stay open 24 hours, so that people that are at the hospital that need to pick up a subscription on their way home at 3:00 in the morning can go to the Walgreens drive-through and get it. That's under the Town Code. If you have a... I'm sorry, I don't know who is speaking.
I don't know who's speaking.
All right, I'll continue, and they can come back if they want.
It was Charlie McLaughlin, and it was accidentally, just muted himself.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And then the other is under the zoning code. And as I stated, it looks substantial, but you can't just count the numbers, you've got to look at the substance. There are many minor waivers which trigger multiple requests for waivers. I categorize them. The first would be under use relief, and the reason we're asking for regulatory agreement is simple. We're requesting the pharmacy drive-through, it's not an allowed use, and that has triggered the need for regulatory agreement. All the other waivers that I'm going to go through are waivers that we could address via the special permit process with the Planning Board, but because we needed the drive-through, we have to do the regulatory process, not the special permit process. Another, under the use category, as I've defined him, is the non-residential development with gross floor area greater than 10,000 square feet. That would normally require a special permit, but we have to request a waiver for that via the regulatory process. Our proposal is for 10,000-square-foot pharmacy, and 6,000-square-foot building, which would either be a retail or office use. We don't have a tenant identified for that yet. We are replacing, well, there was 17,046 square feet of commercial space on this, so we're replacing 17,046 square feet with 16,000 new square feet. The next two, under the uses category, are uses that when I referenced the meeting with the town attorney's staff members and the town manager back in, I think it was May of 2019, it was suggested to us that we could get no credit for the traffic generated by the 274-seat Mitchell's Restaurant and the VFW Post. It was the town's position that they had been abandoned. Didn't necessarily agree with them, but didn't seem to be a fight that we wanted to pick. We thought it was simply easiest to request waivers for that. So the two waivers that result from that, retail uses that increase the number of vehicle trips per day, and new vehicular access, change in use, it increases vehicle trips per day. Those two waivers, had we been given credit for the existing 274-seat restaurant and VFW Post, would not be required because our traffic for this project is less than that was generated by them, and Randy Hart can address that later on if you want a little more detail. It's more his area of expertise in mine. Next is an area for parking relief under the zoning ordinance. The location of the parking triggers two requests. We have parking in the front, and that is discouraged under our ordinance, but not prohibited. What is prohibited is, it says that if it's discouraged to have parking in the front, but if you do have parking, you are allowed to have one row of parking in the front of the building. We have two rows in the front of Building B only, and the second row is for five spots. And then the other is a number of space, the number of spaces. We requested a reduction from 82 spaces to 80. This was done in working with a staff and a planning board to add additional green space. We'd actually submitted a plan that had the 82 spaces, but it was felt the green space was, would be better, and we could eliminate two parking spaces and add additional green space. Next, we've come to the groundwater protection overlay districts. Here's another one where we are in both the groundwater protection overlay and the wellhead protection overlay district. Each of those districts requires 50% maximum lot coverage and 30% total upland and natural state. We have to request waivers under both of those sections, for both of those. We are improving the impervious lot coverage from 78% down to 74%. The total upland and natural state is zero and remains zero because it's all pavement. That's not to say that we're not going to do landscaping, it's just not in its natural state, and the whole site will be disturbed. Currently, as I'm sure you're all aware, it's all paving and empty basements. Next, we get to signage. We're allowed 50 square feet. Paul, can you pull up the rendering of the building? The 3D? We're allowed 50 square feet. If you see that Walgreens sign that's on the front of the building facing Route 28, that is 49.94 square feet. Under our ordinance, that would be it. So we are requesting relief from sign ordinance, but we're proposing 134.16 feet for Building A and 100 feet for Building B. On the Walgreens sign, as you can see, there are two Walgreens script signs, and there's actually two W signs shown, but there'll only be one. The one facing Route 28 is not part of the project. That was just put on by accident on this rendering. So the one that you're kind of looking at face-on on this rendering is not included. It's two Walgreens signs and one W sign. In addition, we're requesting two freestanding signs. One would be on Route 28 near the entrance, closest to the entrance near the airport rotary, and one on the entrance near Barnstable Road. Those freestanding signs would be, have 24 square feet, and each business would get one eight-square-foot sign. So the Walgreens would have the two Walgreens script signs, one W sign, and an eight-foot square sign on the freestanding sign on Route 28, and one eight-foot sign on the freestanding sign on Barnstable Road. Building B would have a, there are two spots reserved, because we don't know if we're going to have one or two tenants for Building B, so two spots on each of the freestanding signs would be reserved for Building B, and there would be two building signs for Building B. And then there are directional signage, which are minor variations, things like going from one square foot to 1.35, 3.7, 1.375 square feet for like exit signs and things like that. Very minor variations, but I think we really need to take a look at our sign code, not just in this area, but for town. I know that we don't want signs all over town, but for example, Walgreens, it's going to have a lot of older people coming in and out of that site, and to be able to see directional signs and drive-through signs, I think is pretty important. Then the only other thing that we have is a request for setback. The building is setback 60 feet from Route 28, but it is not a landscape setback. We are providing a 10-foot landscape buffer along Route 28 and along the perimeter of our property, but the zoning ordinance requires a 60-foot front yard landscape along Route 28. In the rest of the district, it's only 30 feet. And those are the waivers, those are the benefits. We think it's an excellent project. I think if you look at those two buildings, I think they're very attractive buildings, and I'd be happy to take any questions the councilors may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. So now we're going to open this to public comment. I'm going to ask if we have anyone in queue for public comment, please.
We have a few people for public comment. Felicia Penn is here for public comment. Felicia?
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you that I think I attended every one of the public hearings. I might have missed the first one, but I went to the other three. And as I said in a memo that I sent out to the town councilors, I think this project started someplace else and it ended someplace else on the spectrum, but it still has more improvements that could be made. I think it's a little immature to approve the regulatory agreement at this time, and I respectfully request that you guys consider tabling this item, referring it either back to the Planning Board or to another committee of your choice, so that this regulatory agreement can be improved, and that you recommend the following areas for targeted discussion. In the regulatory agreement, it indicates that once the Building B tenant is identified, that the applicant does not have to return to the Planning Board at this time. And I think that that deserves further consideration. I believe that they should appear in front of the Planning Board. As you know, this is an extremely sensitive area for traffic, and knowing that there's a possibility of two tenants in that building, not necessarily one, you know, we don't know if it's a Starbucks, a grocery store, or office space, or what it is. So I think that the town has, should have the right and access to review any future tenant occupation of Building B, which right now is an unknown commodity. I also think that they should look at elimination of the curb cut entirely on Barnstable Road to satisfy the shared driveway access that's contained in the code. The Gateway District particularly discourages creating curb cuts, and Mr. Kenny so nicely did point out that they reduce curb cuts on Route 28, but he didn't mention that they're adding a major curb cut, even though it's right-in, right-out on Barnstable Road. So if you think about the traffic circulation, if you're coming from Yarmouth and you want to get to this building, how would you get there? And you'll quickly figure out what a problem that would be. Maybe they could go into detail later. I think the install, that 3D image that we just saw of the elevation wasn't exactly appropriate to what the plan calls for, I don't believe. I think that an installation of a landscape buffer to screen the parking is required by zoning, and it should be implemented. I also think that in the regulatory agreement, Chapter 168, the contribution to one of nine areas, and this was brought up in many of the public hearings at the Planning Board area, the Planning Board didn't believe that it was their purview to negotiate that, where that's exactly who's supposed to negotiate that. And there's nine areas of community benefit described in Chapter 168, 6A. It's part of the code. It governs reg agreements. It's a requirement that should be met, and it needs to be renegotiated. Right now, the tenant is offering to provide a list of, throughout the county, all the appropriate areas where needles, sharps, et cetera, can be deposited for any of the customers that happen to go in there, and they said they would provide public health programs that Walgreens, that means national Walgreens or regional Walgreens presents, quote-unquote, "from time to time," whatever that means. I mean, that is not one of the nine areas of community benefits outlined in our code, and I think that this needs to be negotiated. Mr. Kenny mentioned that this building conforms to the Design and Infrastructure Plan. Well, it's a little better than it was, but it still has a long way to go. You might notice that it just looks like a Walgreens. It doesn't look like a Walgreens on Cape Cod. It doesn't even look... It doesn't even look as nice as the Walgreens in Yarmouth, which some of the planning board members tried to say, can we have that, please? And because of a height restriction near the airport, it was denied. So I just want to give a reminder also that the Hyannis Gateway Zoning District was designed to minimize traffic impact via shared use access driveways, et cetera, et cetera. And it was made to be a welcoming site, to create projects that are really nice to look at. So when you drive by them and go, isn't this nice? And even though this will be a tremendous improvement over what's there, it wouldn't take much to improve what's there. And I think that it has a chance to set a high bar and to set a good example for what could come after it when other people start to invest in this area. And right now, I think it just needs room for improvement. So that would be my input for tonight. I really appreciate your consideration of doing that. It's I'm not sure it's ever been done before, but this reg agreement has room for improvement and I hope you take the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Penn. Thank you. We have someone else for public comment, please.
There's no one else via Zoom. Sorry, I misspoke before.
Okay.
There's no public comment via phone.
I thank you very much. Therefore, I'm going to close. Hearing no others, I'm going to close public comment and I will open this up for councilors' comments. And would
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I have an opportunity to respond to public comment?
Yes. Yes, please do.
Thank you. For I just want to correct a few things here. On the Building B tenant, we added a condition to the regulatory agreement that we have to identify the tenant when we get when we when we identify the tenant, we have to inform the the planning staff. If it is a use that is allowed as of right in the HG district, then we can proceed with that tenant. If it's one that triggers a need for special permit or zoning relief, we have to go back to the planning board. So it's not accurate to say that we don't have to come back once the tenant is identified. We do have to come back. As far as Barnstable Road and a shared driveway, and this was in Ms. Penn's letter that she submitted in her comments. Number one, we did ask for a shared driveway or interconnect with Staples Plaza. We were rejected because at the time, the owner is said he's exploring his options and possible redevelopment of his own plaza and he didn't want to restrict himself. In addition, the comment about the Barnstable Road curb cut. We added that. So in Ms. Penn's written comments, she kind of indicated that we shouldn't have a Barnstable Road curb cut and we should have one with Staples. This is going to be the primary access for the Hyannis Fire Department. I can't imagine him going through the Staples curb cut and through the Staples parking lot to get to our project and to respond to an emergency. It doesn't make any sense. And as far as somebody coming from Yarmouth and figuring it out, well, if they come up, they're going to come to the rotor, they're going to go around the rotor and go into the first entrance off of Route 28. They're certainly not going to go down Barnstable Road because there's a median there that prevents them from going there and there's no place to make the U-turn. The 3D rendering reflects the building. It's not intended to reflect the entire the site site plan. It doesn't show trees, et cetera. And there are more trees actually than were required. I'll let Mr. Eddie kind of elaborate on that, but I believe there are a total of thirty-seven trees proposed for the project. There was suggestions in the materials that were submitted as part of public comment. They were asking for relief from the number of trees and landscaping, et cetera, and none of that is accurate. We were at one time and the planning board directed us away from that, made us revise the project. Regarding contributions, one planning board member made some comment about whether or not it was right for them to be negotiating it. I don't think he spoke for the entire board. Both the Hyanna Civic Association and Ms. Penn suggested that it be cash contributions, et cetera, and they were suggesting that the only thing we're doing are the Walgreens health plans and identifying needle exchange places that ignores the list of community benefits that I went through, which includes all the infrastructure improvements, the redevelopment of a blighted area, investment in a blighted area, the hydrants. And regulatory agreements are a tool as part of our zoning ordinance to help with projects like this. It's not supposed to be a weapon to be wielded against developers to extract money. I would strongly caution you against getting into a reputation of a pay-to-play in Hyannis where you're going to extract something from a developer in exchange for them investing in projects in downtown Hyannis. You think it's been slow for redevelopment. It's a tough, tough project and if you start extracting additional monies on top of redevelopment projects, you're not going to see any. It's more expensive to redevelop a project than it is to start anew. And most of the time when there has been mitigation, it's when there's been a request for additional density. So the mitigation comes counteract the increased density of the project, which places added stress on the infrastructure. Or the other alternative is when the existing infrastructure is not adequate to service the proposed development. Neither of those cases apply here. There's plenty of public benefit in connection with this project. So I won't go through all of the comments. I'll just say that there's an implication that the pharmacy was going to be open twenty-four hours. It's not. It's only the drive-through. There is no waiver for ten percent of interior parking lot must be landscaped. We did not request a waiver for that. Ten-foot front yard landscape setback, there is no waiver for that. There is no waiver for street trees. And there's a kind of a suggestion in here that the planning board and the planning staff didn't do their job. And if you look thoroughly at this project and look through the entire file, I think you'd come to a different conclusion and I would suggest you rely upon your professional planners and your planning board and their recommendation. And thank you. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. So councilors, questions, comments, please. Mr. Bogan, please. Councilor Bogan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney Kenny, for the presentation. Ms. Penn, for your persistence and I did appreciate your misses. They were helpful and good to see you, Mr. Eddie. I had a couple of questions, but I'm going to synthesize them into one and forgive me if you did touch upon this. And it really does relate to the second unknown tenant. And I will offer a corollary to what Ms. Penn said, that just about anything would be an improvement over what's there right now. And but the question, I guess I would reduce it to is, how did you account for the impact of the second tenant when you don't know who it's going to be? Both in terms of traffic study, the need for waivers on parking, et cetera.
Randy, do you want to take that?
Happy to. Good evening, everyone. Randy Hart, VHB, the transportation engineer in the project. So when we don't know the tenant, there's a number of ways we can approach it. But in this particular case, we want it to be very, very conservative. And so we used a land use code for shopping center, the same land use code that I used when we looked at the Dicks and Target that just went in up in the Cape Cod Mall. So we used one of the highest retail trip generation categories that was available, which will cover pretty much any use that could ever possibly go in there.
So I think another way of saying it is, if I understand you, is you essentially took a worst-case scenario, given the types of tenants that might be in the location.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we did.
Thank you.
If I could add to that too, as well, this is Matthew Eddie, Baxton Engineering. From the parking standpoint, it's the same thing. It was taking the worst-case scenario, the retail space, which is one parking space per two hundred square feet, was used for the parking generator to determine how many parking spaces. If it was office space, it would actually require less parking per zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further.
Thank you, Councilor. Other councilors. Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions here that maybe to direct towards planning and development. So maybe, Paul, are you the lead person on that?
Yes, I should be out there.
Paul, you're muted.
Councilor Neary, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Paul. In regards to the process, if we're in agreement as to the timeline of this project. So this thing started roughly a year and two months ago. Moving forward, we had meetings. And then it sounds like once we got some of the directives in order, then there was some negotiation that went back and forth. Is that correct, Paul? In terms of the structure of the building, the parking, the signage, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, and thanks. That took place at a few different points. I think the initial site plan review meetings took place in April of 2019. Site plan review approval came by July of 2019. I think from July into the fall, there was, and Attorney Kenny can correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was some delay related to getting those FAA determinations. And during that period, there was a, at the staff level, a review of aesthetics and consistency with our design and infrastructure plan before the application went to the planning board. The first planning board meeting was in December and that that conversation about about design continued through the course of those planning board hearings, which wrapped up in May, I'm sorry, in April.
So if I may continue. So with that said, there have been changes to the plan as it's kind of evolved, whether it be aesthetically or the way the building looks. I mean, I've looked at the Walgreens on West Main Street and again, this is just a rendering. But it appears to me that this is frankly, a better-looking building. That would be my personal opinion. So there must have been some process or some movement in terms of the aesthetics deciding that type of thing in the building. Is that right?
Yeah, there were a number of recommendations made to make the building consistent with our design and infrastructure plan. A lot of that focused on materials, roofline changes, and ways to break up the building, the massing of the building, and then also ways to make the building more consistent with the traditional character of downtown Hyannis. There are also a number of changes to the site plan over the course of the site plan review process and into those planning board public hearings.
So with that said, it sounds like there was at least, lack of a better word, a meeting in the middle in terms of how this process moved on. The other questions that I have do relate to maybe Walgreens. I would assume where it's some I consider it a franchise, but it's a corporation. So they must, when a building gets built, similar to say a Ford building, they're going to want to have their branded logo on these things. And I'm sure they must come out with certain sized, at least requests for the towns that they go in. Did that have any impact on the requests for changes at all? Was it size based on original, let's call it, building block that a Walgreens requests?
That's my understanding, but all of my conversations were directly with the applicant. I didn't work with Walgreens representatives at all.
Is this building only in one zone or is it in two zones?
It's in the Hyannis Gateway District base zone and then there's two overlay zoning districts, and the well protection district and groundwater protection district.
So I can really understand where Ms. Penn has these concerns, but I'm not sure whether these concerns are really zoning-related more so than than structure-related, frankly. I'm looking at a building that looks, well, we all know what the property has looked like. Well, let me ask you this, and if maybe somebody can answer this question for me. How long have these properties been vacant now? Anybody answer that? No? Is it a month, a year? I mean, is it three years? How long have they been? When did when did Mitchell's go away and when did BFW go away?
Mr. Neary, I don't know when they when they closed, but I know the building's been torn down for a couple of years now.
Have there been any other applicants that have tried to put a structure or tried to build on this property?
Not that I'm aware of. It was for sale for quite a while and then Mr. Bornstein bought it and it took a while to get a tenant and he's fortunate to have a national tenant in the current economic times.
Well, I guess I would just finish my thoughts, thinking that I'm not sure, A, a process of trying to attract business, especially, I mean, in light of the airport coming up and in light of the amount of time it takes to get some things done in town. It sounds to me that, I mean, the planning boards worked on it and I think they voted unanimously for this project. Our planning and development staff has worked on it, it sounds like diligently. There hasn't been anybody that's looked at this property and let me, you know, preface it by saying this, I don't understand how the whole business model works when you can have a CVS on one quarter and a Walgreens on another, but obviously it must work somehow. I it's difficult for me to understand the math, but we would certainly love to see maybe an upscale office building of some sort that brought in, you know, boutique something or other there. But if you're telling me that nobody's looked at this property in a good period of time and we're looking at what appears to me to be a pretty well-thought-out proposition that has really gone through a worked-out process, for one, and B, the planning board has certainly looked at it and been diligent about it. I've had the opportunity to talk to both the planning department and the planning board and they raised some concerns. The biggest concern really was, in my opinion, I would think that having some type of a cross-traffic into the Staples parking lot would be something that would be ideal. However, you can't really, we can't have an effect on a property that we don't control, right? I mean, I don't think I don't think the applicant has that control either. It's up to the actual property owner to either agree or not. I'd love to see a curb cut in that part of the property somewhere down the road, but I can't really see any other thing that stands out in front of me that would prevent a project like this and I would wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Cullen, please.
I don't know why I can unmute. I am muted. Okay. So I too am absolutely baffled by the proliferation of CVS, Walgreens, and Rite Aid in our community. It just, I mean, it just absolutely baffles me. I think they make us sicker, to be completely honest. Like I've never, I just don't understand why a place that sells chips and soda and used to be cigarettes is considered a pharmacy in any way, shape, or form. When you travel around the globe and pharmacies are actually staffed by people who are knowledgeable about a drug that give it to you over the counter and eliminates the whole third-party system, just makes much more sense than other places. That said, these are extremely blighted properties that need to be improved upon. And, you know, I'll leave the business model up to Walgreens, I guess. I don't really care for the look at all. And I don't believe it's a gateway to my village. Like that isn't what I want. That isn't the impression I want people to have when they enter Hyannis. Then again, neither is the Cascade, right? So I think that there's a certain amount of truth to what Paul, sorry, Councilor Neary says with regard to how much weight do we have here with regard to free business and free enterprise? And when we're looking at a widening of one thirty-two anyway, at some point in the near future and changeability in that area and what it looks like now and how terrible it's been for such a long time. I mean, we're going on like probably eight years, nine years, maybe longer now. I find it really hard to not support something that would improve that area. And I don't really see a future And I don't really see a future for office buildings. I think we're all learning now with COVID that, you know, anything can be done from a basement. I'm in one now with cherry trees. And I just think it's, it might be time to embrace a unanimous vote here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. First of all, I want to say to Airview LLC, I appreciate you tackling this problematic property. I want to say Mitchell's hasn't served a dinner since I started law school, which would have been almost 20 years ago now. So it's been an eyesore for a long time. I, at least in terms of comments, I do not like, I hate having to have the additional curb cuts on 28 and on Barnstable Road, most particularly in that location. I will say, since the addition of the new CVS, when you are now coming off the rotary onto Barnstable Road, vehicles that are immediately braking coming out of the rotary, it has made it more hazardous there in order to turn into that CVS parking lot. At present, going down Barnstable Road toward that rotary, between vehicles exiting and entering the Staples Plaza, not so much the cash and carry, but as we know, and then prior to that, we sort of have the Kentucky Fried Chicken Taco Bell exit and entrance competing with the exit of Winter Street onto Barnstable Road. All these things in that location already create traffic. They already create a significant backup on Barnstable Road. The other thing I think is highly likely to happen, and I will go on the record saying I will be one of the first to do it. If I am coming down Route 28 towards the airport rotary, I think myself and every other local with half a mind to do it is going to go left. We are going to speed across the Staples parking lot. We're then going to take a right on Barnstable Road so we can get into Walgreens. I think, and there's already a ton of quote "cut through" that goes on in the Staples parking lot. I think in addition, you'll see a lot of people choosing to park in the Staples lot on the Windjammer, a GM Pizza side, much like they do in the Christmas tree shop plaza to go to World Market. So I think that's also a potential to cause problems. I understand completely that the Staples Plaza is a private owner. And it's a shame that they're not willing to join in on the curb cut. It would be, you know, great to eliminate those curbs to have better flow between the two areas. It's a shame that can't happen. But I think in terms of the Barnstable Road curb cut, I understand that's a major outlet for the fire department. I think that curb cut is going to be problematic. The other thing I wanted to say as well is sort of in regards to big box and national tenants. I think one thing we saw in 2008 and another thing we saw during COVID is as I look at some of these national chains, these massive corporations, where it took, you know, two months of a pandemic for them to basically declare bankruptcy. You know, World Market, COVID, done. Pulling out everything in the dumpster. You know, my fear when these big box stores come in, in 2008, Circuit City did a build out on 132. They never even took possession. It makes me crazy when these big box stores come into these small towns. They do these massive build outs. And because they oversaturate geographic areas, the second there's any sort of economic downturn, they're out of there. They pull up shop and we are left with some warehousey, large scale building that is very hard to fill with a smaller local tenant, a smaller local business. So that too is of concern for me. I don't know. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Could I, I'm going to recognize you, Counselor Starr. But if Mr. Eddie or Mr. Hart or Mr. Kenny want to make a response to any counselor's comments, just wave to me if you need to respond, okay? Thank you. I guess that would include yourself, Mr. Bornstein. I don't want to lose the thoughts that Counselor Shaughnessy just said, or Counselor Cullen. So, Mr. Bornstein, if you'd like to respond to those comments, and then we'll go to Counselor Starr.
You're muted.
Unpotent.
You're all set now, Stuart.
What's that?
You're all set now.
Okay. There's already a curb cut, I believe, on Barnstable Road. And we're using the existing curb cut, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken. The other thing is, most of Walgreens stores are running 14,000, 15,000 feet. This is running 10,000 feet. It's the new mall store. And the other big problem, I was out there today. We have a serious problem with airplanes flying right over our site. And there is noise pollution. So a lot of tenants can't live with something like that. Walgreens can't. It's more acute in the summertime than it is other times of the year. But it's out there. It's really a tough site. And it's been empty for a long time. And I don't mind telling you, we've had a lot of design changes. It took nine sign offs from Walgreens to agree to the curb cut style. It's not what they do, but they want to be here. And they think it's a good look, and we all think it's a good look. And a lot of work's been put into this. I would say we probably had over 25 meetings with different boards and different people on the boards to get what you see there. And it's really a good looking building in the, what you see there in that picture is the way it's going to actually look. It's not just made up to look good. That'll be the look. It's an expensive building, too. And that's all I want to just say. I think that's.
Thank you, Mr. Bornstein. Counselor Starr, please.
Oh, good evening, everybody. I'm a little concerned at all that the changes that have been made since the beginning of this project. We've got a developer here and a team that is very close to the town of Barnstable. And it took this much work to get it to where it is. And our planning board had to work hard to get there. And we were, I mean, basically, the town's negotiating through these people with Walmart. I mean, that's what took so long, is they can't make decisions. They have to go back to Walmart every time and ask them, will you accept this? Will you accept this? So that sort of bothers me that we didn't start closer together. That's one thing. The fact that the property looks a mess, I would ask the owner, why does it still look a mess?
I'll answer that if you like.
Go ahead.
As soon as we bought the property, we got permits to take down the two buildings that were literally falling apart. And I might add, we couldn't even take them down because they couldn't find the water shut offs on the town record. So we had to pay $12,000 to put new water shut offs in the road in order to shut the water off so we could take the buildings down. And again, this particular site is a tough site. Hyannis has a lot of issues. To bring a new tenant in is not easy. And the location's not easy. It may be on a highway, but it's near the airport, a lot of airport noise. And the economy is really tough. It's tougher now than when we signed this lease. Very tough. I have a lot of tenants, and everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, but a lot of them have a lot of issues. And it took us a while to get somebody up. And we've been trying for over a year to build this. And we did take the buildings down, put a fence around the site, and cleaned it up as best we could until we could go forward to do something with the property.
Yeah, most of us would say you didn't clean it up as best you could. I mean, it's still a mess. And everybody's saying we're calling it blighted, we're calling it an eyesore.
It's dirt. It's dirt.
Yeah, but you, you know, you bought the place, you took a risk buying the place. That doesn't mean we need to have it developed. So one of my questions is, I asked Paul this question. What does the, what do the regulations say about maximum impervious cover? Where's Paul Lacroix?
So in this district, it's 50% in the wellhead protection overlay district.
And they're asking for 74%, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Matthew, what are you speaking here?
Wait a minute, Matthew. Don't tell me what was there before.
Okay, but it's still, it's all a function of the groundwater protection overlay and the 50% impervious coverage. I'm actually on the task force that you all are aware of, that we're the Town Council Task Force, looking at all these things. And that's actually one of the main items we're looking at, is the impervious coverage limitation and the groundwater protection overlays. That was created back in the 80s. The way we design today with stormwater management, infiltration, we're taking all of the runoff on this site, pre-treating it, and we're recharging it right on site. Whereas the site previously, which was 70, you know, you can say, I don't tell you about it, but it was 78% impervious coverage, and it was all running off. What we're proposing here now is a vast improvement. The 50% coverage is one of the things that we're actually going to be, you know, looking at and hopefully presenting to you in the near future to modify that so that 50% impervious coverage is eliminated and you're allowed to use the parent zoning district for the impervious coverage because of the way design is done today and has evolved over the last 40 years, since the 80s, when that GP overlay 50% restriction was instituted. If you look at the parent zoning district that we're in, the HG, it actually allows 80% impervious coverage as the parent zoning district. So we are, we're under what the parent zoning district allows. And from an impervious coverage standpoint for groundwater protection, we're again, we're taking all the water, we're pre-treating it, and we're recharging it into the ground, which is from a groundwater protection standpoint, that's what you want to do. If you've got an impervious coverage, it's all about if we want to get the ground, the water into the ground like it was doing before, and that's what we're accomplishing.
So if you were to build a new building, wouldn't all the water that lands on that property have to go into the ground on that property?
If I was building a new building,
Yes.
I would, the design criteria that we use today is, I would do just what we did here. We gather it, whether it's falling on a building or a parking lot, et cetera, and we collect it and we pre-treat it. And then we design the stormwater facility so that it manages it and it infiltrates it into the ground.
Okay, I mean, beyond the impervious coverage, I just don't think there's enough landscape buffer in the whole project. My other question would be the curb cut. I mean, the comment about coming from Yarmouth, there wasn't an answer to that. We heard an answer, but it didn't make any sense. There's somebody coming from Yarmouth around the rotary. What are they going to do?
The traffic flow on that would be coming down 28 to the rotary, going around the rotary, back on a 28, and they would have to enter the first right in entrance on 28.
So they turned it like Hubbard Paint or something?
They have to go around the rotary. Our original design, you were talking about how, where we started and where we ended up. And it's the process that we go through on, you know, most projects is, you know, it's a give and take and working with the town and understanding what the developer needs and the end user needs and work in that process and coming up with a project that works for everybody. You always make some concessions and improvements and you end up with a better project for everyone. Our initial proposal on this was not all right in, right outs only. We had, we actually had initially two entrances on 28 because there were three before, three existing out there, which is, when we say three existing curb cuts, it's actually, it's a fully paved shoulder and access into this parcel off of 28. You can say there's three areas. There's no definition to it, and it's all pavement. That's all going to get removed. That's all going to get landscaped. The area along 28 is going to be, is going to become significantly more green along the frontage for this property on 28. We had initially, the entrances on a 28 allowed, we were looking for, we wanted to be able to make left hand turns in and out of the site onto 28. Through this process, the town felt very strongly, both, you know, planning, DPW, planning board, and we made the modifications through several discussions and meetings and revisions to get to the plan that you're looking at, which now has a right in, right out only on that main center entrance at 28. And then the Westerly entrances are right in only. So there's no, that's only, that right in entrance only helps alleviate traffic off of 28. It just allows you to peel off of 28 sooner and get into the site. And then your main entrance, it's a right out only and a right in only. So that's why that, if you're coming from Yarmouth, that wasn't our initial desire. But with where we ended up with what the town, you know, negotiations that we had, if you're coming down 28 from Yarmouth, you've got to come down 28. You can't take a left into the site because it's all right in, right out. And you've got to go to the rotary and you go around. And that's not the only, that's not the only place that exists. That exists on 132 with the rotary. And in the future, you know, we don't know what the timing is. But they're looking at on Route 28, at some point, probably in the not too distant future, potentially, that you're going to have a median down 28 anyway. So you wouldn't be able to take that left turn movement regardless.
So is that, so that's the answer? So you still have to go down 28 and turn around and cross?
You can't take a left hand turn off of 28 into the site.
But you have to go around the rotary and then find a way to get?
You go around the rotary, come back onto 28. So you're heading back towards Yarmouth. Then you go to that first right in, there you go. You'll hit that first right turn.
Okay, that helps. So what, just quickly, what is the effect of, what is the plan for widening the road? Is there, can the planning department, is it a state road, Route 28?
Yes.
Is the plan to widen it? And how does this, how is that going to, this place going to be affected by the widening?
The widening will not affect the lane alignment that we have, the new curbing that we proposed, where there is no curbing out there, it's just all asphalt, the curbing on our side. That is from what we've seen from concept plans, because it's not in full design.
Yeah.
That alignment of that side of our aisle is not changed. That aligns with what it would be there. I think it was going to be two lanes in each direction with a median. It's more about the median going in, where again, once you put the median in, you're not going to be able to take left hand turns, just like, again, like happened at 132 on the other side of the rotary, right? Not too long ago.
Yeah, okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Did Mr. Paul Lacroix have any comment back to Counselor Starr? Any information? I felt you maybe didn't get your chance to speak, Paul, on that.
I have nothing to add. Thanks.
You do? Okay, thank you. Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the applicant and his team. And also, thank you to previous planning board member Felicia Penn for her thoughtful input on this project. I have quite a few questions. In looking at the elevations, number one, I see on the sheet A410, your proposed rear elevation. Is that, is the rear of the building west facing, east facing, south facing? Or is that north facing? You have to explain because you have a north elevation, which I believe shows from Route 28. And then you see an east elevation, which is what you would drive through as you come off of Route 28. You'd come through this tunnel of the two buildings and you see that elevation. And then the south elevation, which I think has got the drive through, is what you would see from Staples parking lot. And then the west elevation, which is, again, it looks like a pretty significant entrance, which would be as if you're coming off Barnstable Road. And then I see an elevation that shows two doors and then all siding. Which elevation? Is that on the building that's proposed that is not, we don't have a tenant for? Is that Building B?
I can answer that if you like. This particular building is Building B that we don't have a tenant on.
Okay, I'll call you right now. I think that's a blight right there, that elevation, okay? And I don't know where the rear of that building is, but I suppose that it's facing the Staples parking lot. And I, I don't know where, where, where the rear of that building is, but I suppose that it's facing the Staples parking lot. So that right there, I, I don't like. Have you secured it, the easement from 400 Barnstable Road in order to get into your site? I, I see that you're, uh, an easement's required for you to enter off of Barnstable Road. Have you secured that easement?
Yes, we have.
Yes, you have. And that's from the Hyannis Food Service property?
That's correct.
So, uh, you're proposing to enter your site by going to the right of the, the, uh, food service property. Is that correct?
Correct. The whole idea, idea of this was to bypass the rotary. Coming in, anybody in Hyannis can take that exit into the site, we don't go near the rotary.
Yeah, I, 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 I see that.
Okay.
And actually, um, if you're coming off the rotary, heading south on Barnstable Road, is your opportunity to take a left there because there is no barrier to, uh, um, uh, on Barnstable Road to take that left there onto, um, into your site?
I'm not sure.
My, my question too is, why do you have two right-in-only's on Route 28? Why not just one?
Matt, I'm going to leave.
And if I could just speak, uh, if the engineer could reply, I'd appreciate that.
Yep, the, and Randy can, uh, can add where I'm missing here. But the, uh, the, uh, westerly right-in entrance, that is bringing you directly in front of Walgreens. That's their main entrance. So instead of coming in the center entrance, having to do a, you know, circulation through the site to get over to the main entrance of the Walgreens, it obviously makes a lot of sense to have an entrance for vehicles coming into the site that they're getting to the main tenant there and getting into the front of their building where their access is going to be, where the majority of the parking is going to be. Having it be a right-in only, again, we were, initially that was a right-in, right-out. We, through the process, ended up with it, uh, proposing it to just be a right-in only because, again, it gets you into the site. And it only, again, that just helps with traffic. It just helps alleviate it off of 28 sooner. You're not going to have any backup, there's no turn, there's no left-hand movements out of that. So if you're coming down 28 from the rotary and you want to go to Walgreens, you can just take that right-hand turn, you're right in front of the building and you're right into their main parking lot. That, that's the reason for that, for that entrance. And from an engineering and a, and a traffic standpoint, it, it really does make a lot of sense. And I don't know if Randy wants to add, you know, a little bit more to it from, uh, you know, from his, the traffic engineering standpoint.
I, I think Matt covered it well, but I just want to touch on Barnstable Road because there is a median that extends past the driveway that's proposed. So no left turns will be possible into the site at that location. Median, median extends just to the beginning of the Staples parking lot.
So when, if you come off the rotary, um, heading on Barnstable Road, you will not be able to enter into this property. The only way to enter into this property will be on Route 28. So you'll have to go, if you're, if you're in, interest, if you're coming from Route 28 or 132, you have to, uh, negotiate the rotary and then head down Route 28 for that right turn only. Either the first one, or if you miss that one, then you go to the next one. Is that right?
That's correct.
Unless you're coming north on Barnstable Road, then you can turn right into the site on Barnstable Road.
Correct.
So, um, you know, the, it was mentioned, and I understand and know that this is Gateway District, just like the Fresh Produce Project, um, down at the Gateway, the actual Gateway to, um, to Hyannis at the Yarmouth Line, which is, welcome to Hyannis. Here's, uh, you know, 20 trucks parked right on the edge of the road. I did not support that because of that, that reason. I thought, I think it's a blight to be able to see all those cars. And just like this, I'd like to see much more buffer. Right now, I know it's a blight, and I know the developer, uh, uh, you know, is saying that you're, 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 um, you know, improving the area. Well, just because it's a blighted property now, you're improving it, but that's improving it for your, your, uh, your financial gain too. So I, I'd like to see, um, more buffer along Route 28. And there's so little green space on Route 28. It's been eroded away with curbs and, and then we're proposing a sidewalk. Frankly, I, I'd be afraid to walk on a sidewalk on there unless there's some kind of green strip between me and the road. But, um, I, 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 I hope there's an opportunity to, um, welcome pedestrians there. But, um, I, I, I want to see more buffering on the, uh, throughout the entire project with more green space. So I don't, I wouldn't support any waivers to, uh, putting, um, putting the parking so close to the road there. The other thing that was mentioned too was, uh, about shared, shared use of signage. Uh, you know, we've got, I'd say there's blight in signage throughout this town. From the small villages to, uh, you know, with the curb signs on every curve to, you know, um, to this now. So, um, we've got a very large mall there, i- if you will, strip mall. And now with, uh, uh, the, um, the thought that Walgreens, and I know there's talk about creating jobs on this project too, but you're, you're actually, uh, going to be closing the Walgreens that's there and migrating over to this building here. I'd like to see, uh, you know, one sign on both Barnstable Road and on Route 28 that shows, uh, and if you do, like the Cape Cod Mall, everybody has their little logo, logos on it. And we have TJ Maxx, and everybody knows, all you have to see is a TJ and a, uh, and an M, uh, and Walgreens as well. So I'd like to see a, a little bit, um, more collaboration on, um, the shared signage throughout the entire project and keep that limited, uh, there. So, um, right now, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Talking about the Barnstable Road entrance, um, and knowing the easement is from the food service, as a part of that, was there any consideration perhaps to then making the food service, which I think has a couple of fairly large curb cuts, forcing those customers to use the new entrance onto Barnstable Road? Because that would help mitigate, you know, preventing those food service people who come on and off the rotary, right at the rotary, that would help mitigate the addition of this new. And I know there's an existing curb cut there, but again, between Airport Liquor and the VFW and Mitchells, there hasn't been traffic, there hasn't been activity there for a long time. But I was just curious as to the possibility of, um, having the food service, you know, removing the curb cuts in front of that building right before the rotary and forcing their customers to use this new curb cut on Barnstable Road. Was that considered?
Um, I can speak to part of that. The, uh, as, as far as the entrance, uh, that is going into the Walgreens site, we did discuss that with them. The geometry of utilizing that entrance to get into their site, and he does have trucks that get into there. The geometry does not work for just the way, the, the shape of his parking lot, where his access is for his doors. If you look at the shape of his lot, it's kind of triangular, if you will. We did look at that and it, it, it does not work. And he was not willing to, to do that. As far as the northerly entrance that he has, that's closer to the rotary that I think you're referring to as well. We, I, I would have Stuart maybe speak to that. I did not have any dialogue with him about that as far as, you know, whether he would be, uh, you know, willing to close that. I don't know, Stuart, if you have any thoughts on that?
One of the things that we did, we got the easement. We gave him the right to park a few cars on our property so his customers can access his store without having to migrate through Barnstable Road. If, uh, I should say through Barnstable Road, so they can get out and get in easier. So a lot of this traffic, I didn't point to it, unfortunately, you can't see it. A lot, a lot of this parking that's next to Barnstable Road, some of it's going to migrate onto our lot next to his building. And a lot of them are going to use it from that parking lot to go to the building. It, it's, it's not a, the perfect thing, but it'll be somewhat better than what it is. That's all I can add to it, that's what I know, I know.
Thank you.
If we could remove the map, like, I can't, I cannot see.
I believe Counselor Beedenbender had her hand up.
Thank you very, very much. Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you, I'm all set, my questions have been asked, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Other councilors. Uh, Councilor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for all who are presenting tonight. My concerns, uh, about the project really do center around, uh, sort of the aesthetics and possibly the lost opportunity to really enhance a part of our town that, um, has obviously been sorely lacking for, for many years. And so, again, I, I don't think the whole project has concerns, but I think there is that, that tweaking that we haven't completed that is where I, I'm coming from. And I think as Counselor Rep. Cassetti mentioned, the buffering, um, just feels inadequate, that, that an opportunity to really provide some additional green space. And, uh, you know, the picture that was shown of the rendering of the elevation gave the impression of a lot more green space and buffering of the parking than I believe the, the drawings do. So to me, that, there's kind of a little bit of disconnect. I'm also concerned about us granting cart launch on the 6,000 square foot building. You know, there, there have been some other examples of, uh, our developer, uh, just a little farther down that I, I don't think the design really kind of meets the standards of, of our town's design and infrastructures. And so I'm a little concerned to sort of just leave that, uh, to chance, both in terms of the occupant and also the eventual design of the building. So I'd have a hard time approving the regulatory agreement as is tonight. You know, yes, it, it is an opportunity for the town to move through a process a little bit more quickly. This would be something that would go before the Cape Cod Commission. And believe me, the, the requirements that they have, you know, would have, you know, definitely stalled this project even more. In terms of, uh, the issues of community benefits, um, I understand the perspective of not wanting to saddle a, you know, a source of economic development with additional costs. But I also think that, you know, we need to recognize that, you know, maybe that's part of the negotiation, that there maybe is some recognition, that, you know, we have a need for affordable housing or we have a need for some transportation relief. And, you know, we shouldn't kind of leave all our cards on the table, uh, when we have an opportunity to, you know, come up with a really good project. So those are my concerns, uh, that I just wanted to air tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, councilors, I, I do point out, in your packet, we also have, uh, a letter, uh, on page 33, uh, from the, our town manager, manager else. So, thank you. Counselor Steinhilber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, some overall comments, and I'll always be the one that carries the banner that we need new growth dollars, all right? I just encourage the council to take a big step back. Want to keep increasing the school budget by a couple million dollars every year. Want to make sure there's police on the street. We want to continue this billion-dollar infrastructure program with the sewers. These are the type of projects we need, all right? We need to be very welcoming to developers that are going to invest, especially on problematic sites. I can tell you, there's not a lot of perfect sites left to develop on. So I really ask the council not to make the perfect, the, you know, the enemy of the good, as they say. We may be heading, heading into, you know, some financial tough times, but we got to lock down development. You got to get these property taxes on the rolls. Getting a million dollars in new growth, that's not a million dollars in valuation. That's new growth dollars off of redevelopment, new development. That is not an easy thing to do. And every single year we go into the budget, I mean, we're on a razor's edge. And I just hope everyone really understands that and spends time with the finance director, with our town manager, meet with developers, engineers, really learn how expensive it is per square foot to do anything, anywhere on the Cape. And we cannot be the town that gets bogged down in the weeds, uh, for, for good commercial development, especially on blighted property, that whole stretch of road. From the rotary up to the tracks and beyond is a blight on both sides of the road. We all, all know that. So we need to start somewhere, redeveloping that, getting those tax dollars on the rolls. And I, and again, I'm just going to say, every, every parcel's going to have issues, this one does. May not be perfect, but it's gone through a year, year and a half process. Multiple hearings, committees, engineers, planners, you name it. And to get to the finish line and kind of nickel and dime it, um, and I'm not trying to be, um, off the cuff about it, but we, we really need to be thinking of the big picture here. So I, I'm going to support the project. I think what they're asking is very minor, um, because what you end up doing is making something so expensive, um, that nothing happens. And then all we're doing is hurting our town for the future. We will die on a vine if we do not have new growth dollars coming in. I really hope every counselor, every single day while you're a counselor, you think about that. That is our most important thing, new growth dollars. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor Steinhilber. Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you. I just want to say that there oftentimes I don't agree with Counselor Steinhilber. And there are a lot of issues that I do have with this project, but I have to say that I agree with Counselor Steinhilber, that there is a bigger picture that has to be considered here. And that overall, the project is what it's going to be. Some tweaks would be really great, um, you know, regarding signage, setbacks, landscaping, what have you. But, um, I, I'm not prepared to scuttle this project, um, and, and forsake the new growth dollars that we need.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Beedenbender for the comment. So this is my concern, uh, we've, you have a question?
Counselor Clark has a question.
Okay, okay, Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Council President Beber, um, and thank everyone for their presentations. I heard the reference to, um, a new tenant at this property, but it's not so much that we're bringing a new business to our town, but more of moving it about 100 yards across a, a parking lot. And so is it really bringing new dollars to town? And we have a, a plan, Plan X for the second building. I have to say that I appreciate the investment of time and effort by a lifelong resident and volunteer and former planning board member, Ms. Penn. Not very many people are volunteers in this town. But, but the investment she's made over years has given her the, um, the background to weigh in on this. And, um, I agree with her that we can do better, and I will vote to, um, table it if that's proposed. Thank you.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Dagwan, please. Counselor Dagwan, please.
Uh, yes, I, I was the sponsor, um, of this project. And, um, part of the reason we're sponsoring it is because that has been a blighted area. But this is, am I echoing? I feel like I'm echoing here. Hopefully people can hear me clearly. But I feel as though we, uh, this is a, it was designated a gateway city. And I've spoken with the applicant, um, about my concerns about the project. We spoke recently, and, and one of the concerns I had was about, um, someone who travels Barnstable Road. People who don't travel Barnstable Road, um, uh, may not understand the, the backup that's there right now. And I was so hoping that the curb cut, um, that you would combine the two parking lots. It just makes sense, um, to do that, to, you know, for me to come out of Staples and then, you know, drive a couple of feet and pull into, uh, Walgreens and then go a couple more feet and, um, I feel like I'm in and out. A couple more feet and go someplace else. If, if you, if you don't experience that, if you don't go in that area, then you don't understand how the traffic is so backed up. It's terrible. But I also want to say that as a gateway city, we were looking towards pedestrian travel, bicycling, people being able to walk around. And I think to put, um, And I think to put more trees, that was a big issue for me, that we do have trees, more trees in those parts, in that parking lot, that we do try to, because it's going to, it's going to be a busy area. There's no, I'm fading in and out here. I can't tell. Does anybody tell? Okay, you can hear me. Okay, fine. All right. I'm just going to fade in and out. I'm going to support this project, because, you know, we do need to do something there. But I have spoken to, you know, the applicant about, maybe in the future, you can combine those lots. It just makes sense. When you're putting 82 parking spaces in there, that's a lot of people walking around, moving around. It would be nice to have a lot more buffers. You know, and it is a great gateway city. This is the Cape. I don't want to come in and see, you know, some, like you said, brick and mortar, or a strip mall kind of approach when I come to Hyannis. I want it to look like Cape Cod. People come here because it looks unique. So, I really want to emphasize, as many have said, of buffering, I'm hoping that the applicant and others will really hear that comment, because we've heard it a lot, and that we really consider the pedestrian movement in that area. As I said, we're trying to increase people walking and the cycling. And there are going to be people that are going to be walking in that area. You see it right now. Lots of people just walk into Job Lot and Staples and so on and so forth. So, just keep in mind the tenants, I mean, the residents that utilize that area right now. But I think it's a good project, and I'm going to, I'm going to support it. So, I hope others will do the same. With some thought from the applicant and his team, to consider some of the things that are being said tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I see Councillor Lebec has a question.
Councillor Lebec.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just if I could talk, if, just want to tip of the hat to Matt and that ad hoc committee. I know you guys are working hard to, the whole reason why that committee was put together, and of course, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that we were, your task to review our zoning regulations as they currently stand and find ways where we've, we've moved on. We've, we've made improvements either through technology and engineering, that these type of waivers, even some of these waivers, they're antiquated. They don't need to necessarily be in place. Now, I would agree, and maybe Matt, or I know, John, you referred to this as far as the landscaping goes, to the amount of trees you said that were required, or what you're, how you mitigated that.
Yeah, I could answer that if you'd like me to. Paul, I don't know, could you bring up the landscape plan, possibly? But while Paul's trying to do that, we, there definitely are no waivers to the tree counts. We actually are providing more trees than the zoning requires. There's 11 street trees that are required. It's based on one per every 30 feet of frontage along 28. There are 16 parking lot trees required. That's one per five parking spaces. So, there's 27 total trees that are required by zoning. We're providing 34 trees. 11 street trees are provided. There's at least 16 parking lot trees. The parking lot trees need to be located within 50 feet of the parking lot. Basically, the 16 plus the additional extra seven, I'll call them, so 23 trees, all would qualify as parking lot trees. So, there are, we are providing more trees than the zoning requires by a count of seven, I believe. Also, and I know it's, it's hard to see on the black and white drawings, and again, back to that 3D rendering, they didn't show the landscaping in that view. There'd be a full row of trees. If you look along this landscape plan here, and I don't know, you probably can't see my pointer, I know. But landscape plan, yeah, there you go, Paul. You know, the trees right across there on 28, if that 3D rendering that you were looking at, you would be looking through all those trees. There's a count of 11, 12, there's 13 trees in that area right there between the street trees, and there's a couple of parking lot trees. If they were put in that rendering, you wouldn't see the building. And so, the point of that rendering was to be able, so you could see what the building looked like, not seeing the building through the trees. And also, the green area, and Paul, because you probably can see the lines well, along 28, could you maybe just kind of circle the areas where it's going to become green landscape? Like, if you start to the left of that, on the far west, yeah, that whole area there, that's a, that's a rain garden, bio-retention area, which is what the zoning ordinance wants to see, what the town wants to see. That's the way we are doing design. Now, that's all, that's all currently paved right now. That's all going to go away. That's all going to become a green area, you know, some trees, some grasses, pasture-like. Then, as you go just past the right end, you have that whole area, right, right all the way to there. That's about just to the parking stall, not counting the islands that go into the parking, but just that strip from the travel aisle on 28 to the head of the stall. That's over 25 feet of green space that's being added. That's currently, right now, if you look at that, you go by there, pull it up on Google, whatever you want to do, and you look at it, that's 100% asphalt. I mean, from one end to the other on this frontage, it's all asphalt. There's no islands, there's nothing. It's 25 feet, at least, it's a little bit more than that, of green space that's being added. Plus then, the islands that go in and around our parking stalls at front along 28, that adds another 20 foot in depth. The stalls are 20 feet. So, where you have those islands, it's actually 40, 20, 45 feet of green space from the travel aisle into that first aisle, travel aisle on our site. And so, you have that on that, that area, then you go to the, further to the east and pass the, there you go, the next area after that main entrance. It's the same thing there. Again, 25 feet to the head of the stall, and then another 20 feet when you go past the stalls. That's, which again, is all pavement. That's going to turn all green, and you can see the tree symbols there. There's, there's 11 street trees, and that's as much as you can fit right on the frontage in the right of way, because you obviously have site distance that you need at these entrances. There's a fire hydrant that's being added out there that has to have clearance for the fire department. So, this is as many trees as we can physically place there and meet the other design requirements. And then, you also have some of the trees that are into the lot a little bit, that are the parking lot trees there. And then, you also have significant shrubbery and ground cover that's all proposed there. And again, when you see it ultimately versus what it looks like now, and what it's going to, what it's going to look like, there's going to, I think you're going to be surprised at how much green there actually is there. And I know it's hard to see in a black and white drawing like this. But then, you know, just kind of going around the site the rest of the way. If I go down between the Staples on the easterly property line, that's all green space. That's all turning into green space. We have a bio, two bio-retention areas there, all green space, pasture, grass, shrubs, some trees. Then, you go along the back property line, which is the southerly part. That's where that abuts the existing, the G and Pizza, et cetera, those structures that are right on the property line. There's literally no separation that you're really, between these new buildings and the back of those existing buildings, you're really not going to see either of the backs of those buildings unless you're literally in the site and in that back travel aisle, because the buildings are going to block each other. So, again, there's very limited room there. And there's actually, some of those buildings were slightly encroaching, which, you know, entered Mr. Bornstein's lot. And we worked with Staples and so forth and worked around it, so nothing had to be modified there. So, everybody worked together on that. And then, again, just going back around, creating green space down along the westerly, again, fairly narrow there, that's meeting the six-foot parking buffer. But then, as you get towards, going to the, to the north along that westerly line, Paul, if you can kind of bring the pointer up a little bit. Yeah, and then up in that area, you see that area right there. That's all pavement currently too. And right to the left is the, is 400 Barnstable Road that we were just talking about. So, that, all that area, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, there's seven trees being added there to help kind of buffer from the existing parking lot that's off of our property that's just to the north of that as well. You then have some interior on the parking lot that's right out to the left of the Walgreens building with kind of the main parking field. Yeah, there you go, Paul. You got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 trees. It's a good, that's, all those islands are 10 feet wide. They are meeting the zoning requirement of 10 feet wide. That's a, that's a nice landscaped island there. There's six trees in there. Then, you go just to the right of that, which is next to the drive-through aisle. Again, that's another bio-retention area. Obviously, the configuration of that island has a unique shape, obviously, but you've got some areas that have some good wood to it and some good green area. So, you know, I think there's more green here than you're, than you're thinking, that there may be, you know, understanding it is a challenging site, the configuration of the site, the road frontages, et cetera. But I really think, at the end of the day, I think you would be pleased in how it would look. And then, just one other item, if I could just add to, I know, you know, pedestrian access was discussed. We are providing for sidewalk along 28. We're providing for sidewalks coming in and agreed currently right now, I would agree, one of the councillors mentioned, you know, walking on 28, that's something you wouldn't necessarily want to do. And I would agree with the way it is now. But it's all about starting this, right? It's that first part that starts that redevelopment, gets the interest going. And then, you can, now you can start to create the pedestrian corridor going down there. So, we're providing for that so that it can be, can be installed and be there. Access into the site from that. We then also added sidewalks off of Barnstable Road and at that entrance, and brought that into the site. And again, circulation through the site. And those are all part of the, the working back and forth with the town. Then, actually, adding the sidewalk off of Barnstable Road came from dialogue and suggestions directly from the planning board, which was, which was a great suggestion. So, I just wanted to point those items out. Thank you.
Could I follow up, Mr. President?
Who's asking? Who's talking to me?
Matt. Councillor Lebec.
Mr. Councillor Lebec, yes, please, please.
So, and again, I didn't necessarily have a problem with the landscaping. I just wanted to give Matt an opportunity to speak, because, again, having seen the plans, having been on the zoning board of appeals for a number of years, I saw trees. I saw green on the plans. And so, and I wanted, but I, obviously, Matt can explain it a lot better than I can. And again, with the, and even like the signage code that was talked about, just, again, something that's antiquated, and it's even been discussed on the zoning board level for the last, I don't know, again, I was on, seven years ago, six years ago, and that's something that needs to be looked at again. So, again, so I just want to say that some of these waivers, it just, they, they need to be changed anyway. So, it's, again, it's a hoop. And the thing, I've just, I've talked about this a number of times. We're making businesses jump through hoops that we know, even at the planning level, that don't necessarily have to be there. So, and I get that, again, I'm not saying laissez-faire, let everybody in. But again, there was a lot of work done on this project. There's, there is green space. There is pedestrian movement. You know, when it comes time to widen the road, again, that's the state's job. And also, another side note, too, just to, just to kind of give a, just a bit of a history lesson, Walgreens is not owned by Walmart. Walmart is owned by the Walton family, and the Walgreens is owned by Charles, the descendant, descendants of Charles Walgreen, who was from the Chicago area, his family, and that's where Walgreens Pharmacy started. So, it has no relation to Walmart, because sometimes when that's said, people get scared when you hear Walmart. It's not the case here. So, again, I think it's a good project. You know, and again, if we're looking for perfection, I think that, you know, sometimes it's, you know, it's a lost cause. And sometimes, again, we need to be somewhat welcoming. I watched the meetings. I was at the last live meeting in person before the COVID hit. And they were working, you know, they were jumping through hoops. They were trying to make things happen. They were having open and honest conversations. And so, I found the liaison to the planning board. So, I think that process went really well. So, I want to kudos to them, kudos to everybody that presented today. And, you know, I, and I, I feel safe with this other building, that there will be, again, if it's not by right, it's going to come before us again. And there'll be, that will be worked through as well before anything comes in there that's going to create more traffic or blight, for that matter. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we continue, I just want to make a few things very clear here. Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. We're talking about a zoning change we require, as Councillor Snapp brought up earlier, and concerned by Attorney Noberg. This is a two-thirds vote to carry. We take a vote, and it goes down, the project is dead, if I'm correct. I'm open to somebody correcting me on that. So, I don't want anybody rushing to say, you know, you want to move a vote. Also, to fill us in, just on procedure here, and I know Councillor Neary wants to talk, I know Mr. Kenny wants to talk. This should not be tabled. This, it should be postponed to a date certain and continue the hearing or close the hearing and refer back to the planning board or vote on it. So, I have some concerns. If we take a vote tonight and we do something in concrete that we feel pleased with or not. So, please, nobody, and I also would say, if we end up going for a vote, a bit of instruction for all new members, you can use the charter objection. So, if we do move to a vote, and you think we're not ready for a vote, and somebody says, moves for it, and somebody seconds it, before we take the vote, you simply say charter objection, and it is postponed for at least two weeks until our next regular meeting. So, you have power. I just want to share that with everyone. So, now, if you don't mind, Councillor Neary, I'd like to take Mr. Kenny and see if that clarifies anything. Mr. Kenny, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. What did you want me to clarify?
I thought you wanted to speak.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Councillor Snapp, my councillor out in Mossens Mills. Building B is not going to be left to chance. Building B is going to be built. It's the tenant that we're looking at. So, I don't know what could be built on the street that wasn't according to plan, but Building B has to be built according to plan. And I forget who objected. I think it might have been Councillor Crassetti to the, to the backside of Building B. We do have the option. We have to work with the planning staff. That can be cedar shingle and clapboard as well. But as Mr. Eddy pointed out, and that's what I was going to point out to you, is you really can't see much of the back of that building because of other stores. They're not up against the property line. They're basically over our property line. The back of, the back of Building B faces the back of the other store, and you're really, you're not going to see it. You're not, not going to notice it. But we do have the option of going clapboard and cedar back there to break it up. But we, in, in order to do that, we have to get approval of the elevations with the planning staff. So, if that's something you would prefer, I'm sure we could do that.
Thank you. Councillor Neary, please. Councillor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have, I have two questions. I'll provide the answers. And then, a quick statement. My first question is, how many trees are located in that facility? In this talk, I've had an opportunity to actually go down both Barnstable Road and Route 28. How many trees are on that road between the lights at Kentucky Fried Chicken and the end of Kent's carpet land or the Eastern Bank, or the end of the airport fence? I'll give you the answer. Zero. No trees. None. Okay? Secondly, CVS has two rows of parking in front of their building. Now, I'm not saying old sins, you know, should not go forgotten, but it's right in the back. It's two rows of parking there. That's the second thing. The third thing is, we get improvement in a, in a property. Improvement breeds competition. Improvement breeds investment in joining properties. If we let it sit, if we create incredible hoops for someone to jump through in order to get past, I mean, what are we looking at when the airport property opens up? Is this process going to, after, gets vetted through our planning and development departments and then through the planning board? Going to go through this whole question and answer? You know what my opinion is on the project. I just, we're beating this thing to death. I would love to see some shrubs, some, some rainwater treatment, no flooding, no dust, and, and new investment in that area, Hyannis. I think it deserves it. I think it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Starr, and then Mr. Bornstein. Thank you. Counselor Starr, and then Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Counselor Starr, please.
You're muted, Counselor Starr. Counselor Starr, you're muted.
I switched pages there. So Mike, can, can I, I have a question from Paul Waccaro. Can you pull up the, the front of Building B?
Hold on one moment.
Yeah, we were talking about the back of Building B, and I know the fronts, I mean, I'm not sure, let's look at it. So, I don't know, I mean, is the, and we, in, in, I went to some of the meetings and in the discussions, they're comparing this to the Ethan Allen Building that's down by Whole Foods. It doesn't look very Cape Cod-y. There's nothing welcoming, it looks just like a brick building, and the back is just one brick wall, with a flat, and here we've got it with a flat roof. I just, I just want people to look at it so that when, when it's built, you can see what it looks like. And the, and the other idea about the option of putting shingles on the back, if we improve, if we approve this tonight, that won't happen. Because they won't, I mean, they won't, there'll be no need to come back and ask for shingles. That looks, I don't know, what is it now? Maybe I should ask that. John, John Kenny wants to answer that question.
First of all, it's not brick, it's cedar shingles wrapped around the building. And what I was suggesting was, instead of having all cedar shingles in the back, we have the option of putting in clapboard. It's actually a little bit more expensive to put in, but that, what you're looking at there are cedar shingles proposed.
Okay.
It's either going to be cedar shingles or cedar shingles and clapboard.
So, is there a better picture of the front? I don't know, what are those black things in the front?
Honings.
So they're cloth onings, or they're solid?
I, I don't know the material.
Okay.
The 3D rendering, Paul, maybe if you bring that up, that does show the front elevation, that might help a little bit.
That would help, yes, thank you.
There you go.
Oh, I see, yeah.
If I could too, just to comment, I know it was stated earlier, just, you know, from the, the roof line on these buildings, it's, it's a height aspect because of the airport, it's very limited, so that's totally what is driving that, that's just, that's what it is.
Okay, so this, this picture has four onings in the, am I seeing it right? I don't see that, this, I don't, are there four onings on that building?
It's behind the tree.
Yeah, it's behind that tree.
Okay, so I just want people to see that. So just one other comment is that, that everybody who goes to Walgreens, at some point during their trip, is going around the rotary, either to get there or to leave, you have to go around the rotary.
No, that's not accurate.
So how would you get there?
Well, if you're coming from downtown Hyannis, you could turn right in off Barnstable Road, go to Walgreens, turn right on 28, and get down to Spring Street and turn right into downtown Hyannis.
Oh, you're right, okay. I just, I just worry about the traffic, we, I mean, Mr. Dagewell was talking about just Barnstable Road, even before summer started, it gets backed up, and we know that Route 28 gets backed up, but I'm, I'm sure you've looked at the traffic there. I, and I'm, just another comment, just to the planning department, just in the future, there needs to be, we need to look at that whole rotary and all the spokes that go out of it, to find some ways for people to cross the street. People have been injured crossing the streets, you know, from Wendy's to, you know, the back of the mall, I mean, there, there, there's no way to cross Barnstable Road now, as a, as a pedestrian unless you run. So I'm just thinking that, you know, you've got that, you've got that little sidewalk coming out of, out onto Barnstable Road, it doesn't really go anywhere, it goes to the parking lot of the food place next door, but somewhere it'd be nice, either at Staples or somewhere to have a crossing, you know, either, I don't know. So that's, that's just a general comment, because I think if we want to be more open to people riding bikes and walking, we need to help them get there safely.
I believe.
That's, that's, that's not part of this discussion necessarily, but.
I was just going to say, I believe a little further up the road is a traffic light with a, I think there's a walk signal there.
Right at the end, at the end of Winter Street, yes, yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bornstein, Mr. Bornstein, please. You're muted, Mr. Bornstein. Mr. Bornstein, you have to open your mic.
Okay.
You're all set now, Philip.
Okay, could you bring up the color picture? Paul, let me address a few things. One of the things that Matt didn't tell you, is probably 200 or 300 shrubs around the buildings inside the property line that nobody's talked about. There's about altogether 400 shrubs in this green space. We have as much green space or more as anything on, on 28, all the way up to Yanis. Now, if you take a look at what we did at the Doubletree, we have full-time gardeners in there, and we wrap around the street around, I shouldn't know that street, the street that goes up the whole side, we've landscaped that and tree, it's gorgeous. And then we went over the Cappies, and did the same thing over there. We've spent a lot of money on landscape, we're trying to take that whole street and bring it up, let's face it, that street's a disaster. We made a big investment on it, we're making more investment. The reason this small 6,000-foot store is empty, I have brought people down there, look at the street and go, you know, I don't want to spend money to go in there yet, I'm not looking to put a t-shirt store, I'm looking to do something very upgraded, and I can afford to keep it empty till I get the right tenant in there. And once we complete the site and landscape it, it looks good, we'll get some decent tenants. We have interest, but nobody wants to commit, so they want to show me first. And this building, unfortunately, the reveal you see on the, on the Walgreens site, it doesn't come out on the, on the other site, but the roof, and this was, planning board sat down, one of these big reveals, we put them on, and in the bottom of the front of the building is stone, a brick, it matches the Walgreens, it ties in very nicely, the back, it looks a disaster, and I agree with it, it should be split up between clapboard and shingles, and we mentioned to do that, and they left it up to our discretion, as long as the building inspector improved it, I think's that what it was. But this is going to be really good looking, and this, this, beside the trees, there's four, 500 shrubs in this place, I mean, it'd be a full-time maintenance crew taking care of the outside. It looks, it'll look good, and, you know, it's a tough site. You say we, you want more green, well, if we give you a lot more green, we lose parking, we can't lose parking because that's, you guys have requirements. So we asked for some waivers to lose some parking, but I have more green on this than anything you have in the area. And we've done our homework, and we've worked with everybody, we listened to what everybody told us, and this is it, I don't know how much more we can tweak it, there really is nothing to tweak. I mean, this is, this is the show, we probably spent a quarter million dollars, what you see here with everybody working and doing stuff, maybe more, I haven't counted the money, but we've done everything we could to make this look great for the town. I have an investment in this town, I put more money in Hyannis than anybody else, by three or four times. You know, we're doing the, right now we're doing the Times building, we're going to have 22 great apartments, we have bankers and lawyers coming in wanting to move into these things, that's how nice they're going to be. I love Hyannis, I'm trying to make it a better place. Is it perfect? Probably not, it's as close, I have a great team, Matt has done a great job, the traffic people done a great job, the landscapers, we used the best landscaping company I can think of, they're in Sandwich, I can't think of the name, Matt, you maybe could, could mention it, we've done about five or six different versions of this landscaping, and this is the best we can get out of it. If you, if you turn it down, so since then, tabling it, I can't do any more with it. I mean, it's going to take years and years to get another tenant, this economy's pretty bad, and I can't do any more with the site than what we did. Is it perfect? I, I'd give it an 85 to 90% perfect, you can always make something better, but it's what I got to deal with, I got height restrictions, I got depth restrictions, and, and Hyannis is Hyannis, we didn't create what we have, we have a palette we had to work with, and we had a lot of guidance from the town, believe me. It took, I think this is our fourth version of Walgreens, and every time we change it, it took nine different people to sign off in Walgreens to get where it is, and they've been working with us very nicely, two wonderful people. So that's all I can say, we've done what we can do with it, and, and if you, if you expect more, there's not a lot more we could do with it. I guess it's either, you know, you do what you got to do, we, we put a heart into this thing. I mean, we have worked very, very hard to create what you see here, and it is a good-looking building, it'll be an asset for that corner, and believe me, it took years to find somebody to go in there. And, and again, that airport with those planes flying over, believe me, go down there any time you want, they're there, and that doesn't help, but we're, we're, we're making the investment in the property, probably, I don't know, four, six, seven million dollars, and we, we, we think it'll be a home run for the town, and the town's going to pick up quite a bit of tax money, we could certainly use it. I mean, it is what it is, I think, I just, we just put a heart in it, and I, I hope everybody likes it as much as we could. Yeah, there's, if you got into the nitty-gritty of how much work we've done with this, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a pretty building, it really is, it's all shingles, it's brick, it's clapboard, they have trellises up, we've done everything we could to, to make it less commercial, more homey, and I think they've done it, and I don't mind telling you, this came from guidance from the planning board and the people on the planning board, they put a lot of work into this thing to get this, hours and hours above and beyond, everybody had input in it, and this is the end result. So I, we did our best, if it's not good enough, I apologize, but there's not much more we could do with the site, it's a real tough site to work with.
Mr. President, if I could, I just had one other question, or two other questions. When, if this is approved tonight, when do you propose to start construction on the property?
One week from, from that, we've already have steel ordered, we jumped the gun, and that's a fact, I could show you the contracts, we've signed contracts with everybody, this will be up and running and collecting tax money by the first of the year, close to it, maybe a month afterwards.
So you propose that it would take approximately six months to completion?
That's correct.
Okay, and another question regarding the landscape of the retention areas, are those to be fenced? They, it showed like there was elevation to those retention areas, are they fenced retention?
Yeah, they are not fenced, the, as bio-retention areas, rain gardens, if you look around town, you'll see many of them, they're very shallow, they're only, they're only a couple of feet deep, they're not, they're not excessively deep, so we take all that into consideration for sure.
And what do, what do you, fill those with plants or?
Yep, yes, plants, there's some river birch, the, the sides in the bottom are, kind of like, it's like a meadow grass, it's a special seed mix for basins, and it's kind of like, creates like a meadow grass.
Thank you.
Okay, any other counselors? Counselor Bogan, please.
Mr. President, I'd move the question, I'd move approval of item 2020-185.
We have a first, we have a second. We have a first and a second. We're calling for a vote on item number.
We're calling only to move the question right now, Paul.
Okay, all those.
Actually, Mr. President, if I can, just make the motion to vote on item 2020-189 as presented.
Okay, so we're moving on the item, we're voting on the item.
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Okay, so this is, this is a motion to approve, this is for a vote to approve item number
Actually, it's 189.
Thank you very much, 189, regulatory agreement.
Wait a second, wait a second.
185?
185.
185.
Oh. Motion to approve 185 as written, yes.
Mr. President.
Page 33.
Yeah, I have it twice, I have one item that's noted as 2020-185 on page 20, and I have another item that's noted as 2020-189, I don't recall what page number that is, because now they're all mixed up.
All right, whoever gets the answer first, let us know. We've been, we've been at this two hours now, so I always get nervous at this time.
It's 185.
Yeah, yeah.
185.
185, okay, that's right off the agenda, page three, okay. So, if we, if we get this right.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Counselor.
It looks like 189 has to do with the drive-through, is that the only difference? Just for clarification? And can anybody help, help me with this?
I think it's a Scrivener's error. There's no 189 on the agenda.
185, yeah.
I see it as 185 on the agenda.
Yes.
It is, but on page 33, it's a Scrivener's error, it's listed as 189. I believe it is 185. Cindy, can you confirm that, that it's 185?
Regulatory agreement is 185.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is going to be a roll, roll call, we need two-thirds vote on item number 2020-185, which is a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and Airview LLC. The yes vote is for approval, no is against.
Yes.
Badham Clerk, please, roll call.
Counselors, Rap Crissetti. Pass.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snerp, I know.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenmender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewell. You needed nine for two-thirds. Are you coming back to me? Come back to Counselor Rap Crissetti. Excuse me, Rap Crissetti.
I'm going to abstain.
Looks like you have 11 yes.
Thank you very much. So the motion on item number passes, we have our two-thirds, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your presentation, thank you, counselors, for your great deliberation, truly appreciated by the chair and by everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Bornstein.
Want to thank everybody for taking the time, and you won't be disappointed.
Thank you, make us proud, make us proud, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy, and thank you to your team. So, counselors, this concludes our business for the evening, we, so what we, we, we obviously were talking about, we had kept open tomorrow evening, so the special town council meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, June 26th, is canceled, and a notice will be posted to that effect. So the town council's next meeting will be at its regular meeting on July 16th. With that said, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So much.
We have, we have a first and a second. Badham Clerk, the last vote of the evening, please, roll call. I'm sorry?
Hebert.
Oh, yes.
Levesque.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snerp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Beedenmender.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewell.
Yes.
Rap Crissetti.
Yes.
13 yes, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much. Safe travels. Have a good weekend, thank you everyone, thank you.
Have a good night, good weekend.
Happy fourth, everyone.
Thank you.